Call the meeting to order.
Flight deleted to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands our nation under God, in this law, in liberty and justice for all.
Lord be with us tonight as we do the business of the city for the good and the welfare of the people. In Jesus's name, amen.
Prove for the minutes.
Actually, agenda, sorry.
I move to approve the agenda.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Citizen comments?
Yes, and at this point, this is for items that are not on this evening's agenda, and I'll go through kind of the process before we start. Item F1, proceed.
Any citizens' comments that are not related to the agenda?
What's the agenda? Are you going to post the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, it'll come up as we go.
So how do I know if I want to need to?
Are you here related to the letter you got?
Yes, sir.
That's in the agenda.
We need a motion to close it out.
Nope. This is my way. We'll close citizen comments. With approval of last month's meeting, third minute.
Make a motion to approve the regular minutes of last month, number 14.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
And what we have this evening for the agenda, we'll go through items F1 through four, which will itemize here in the subsequent slide, and for each item, they'll be presented a staff report. And then at that point, we'll allow the applicant for the agenda item or their representative to speak. And then upon conclusion of any questions that the planning commission may have of staff or the applicant representative, the chairperson will call the meeting to order. The first one is the example that I cited here, which is item F1. And then upon conclusion of three minutes of comment for each individual on a given agenda item, after stating your name and address, the public comment portion for that specific item will be closed. And now we'll begin with conducting a public hearing for consideration of rezoning for R1 to a planned unit development for case zoning number 22-4. And what this shows is a map of that location. For your familiarity, this is Kellogg, US 54400 with 183rd Street. This shows existing water and sewer lines, as well as a highlight of parcels under consideration this evening. Baughman Company has submitted an application on behalf of developer Ben Healy for the rezoning of two parcels, zoned R1 single family to a planned unit development. The land is located on the east side of 183rd, just across from the Walmart. The land is approximately 53 acres in size. A PUD is retreated, is treated as a rezoning request, and final map and layout concept will need to be finalized before it's allowed to proceed. And that will actually occur at the city council level. Analysis for PUD, it's taken in four parts, review or preliminary layout, the plating or preliminary design, the final plat, and then the final PUD layout map. The following requirements are found in Article 13 of our zoning code in Section 100 dot H dot 1 through 17. And it itemizes a list of criteria that's defined by statute and case law as to whether or not these conditions are met for the planned unit development to be allowed to proceed administratively. And that's that the subject property is classified as both farming and ranch operation with improvements, and the surrounding land, subject to the property farming with no improvements, that the land use is, to the east, is farming, and there are no improvements. The land to the south is a walking bike trail owned by prairie travelers, and further south is a development called Marine Meadows with single-family residence, detached housing. To the west, the land use is department store warehouse club, Walmart Superstore, and then farming and ranch land with no improvements in the undeveloped portion of the Goddard Galleria. The north is a farming ranch operation with improvements and a single-family residence. The current zoning of the subject property and that of the surrounding neighborhood in relation to the request, that land is currently zoned R1 single-family detached, which is the default zoning for when land comes into the city via unilateral or petition to annexation, and in this case, it was petitioned by the property owner. To the east is zoning commercial 2, general business district, and I1 industrial district. To the south of the zoning is rural residential, and to the west is zoning C2. The land to the north is zoned rural residential. Is the length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped or vacant as zoned a factor in the consideration? No, the land was in the county until very recently. At such time, the city had no formal regulation or authority over the property under petition. Would the request correct and aired in the application of these regulations? That answer is no. Is the request caused by change or changing conditions in the area of the subject property? And if so, what is the nature and significance of such change or changing conditions? And that is yes. The city of Goddard is experiencing growth, both residentially and commercially, and this mixed-use development would be a continuation of that growth. Item six is do adequate sewage disposal and water supply in all other necessary public facilities, including street access, exist? Or can they be provided to serve these areas to the subject property? And that answer is yes, and that will be performed during the special assessment process. And 183rd, which is a developed municipal and county road south of the trail, is currently in place. Would the subject property need to be platted or replatted in lieu of dedications made for rights-of-way easements and access control or building setback lines? And that's yes, because they're currently unplatted and within that process of a PUD. This would be addressed at that time. Item eight is would screening be necessary for existing or potential uses for the subject property? And that's yes, screening to the south may be necessary if commercial uses are introduced in the area. And if the planning commission felt that the double tree row on the prairie trail is insufficient, screening would also have to be introduced to the northwest portion to screen the home to the north if commercial was introduced abutting that piece of property. Item nine is, is suitable vacant land or buildings available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as requested? And that's no, the existing PUD land, which is vacant currently, has already been designated for other uses, including that for Tanganika Wildlife Park and Dova State Second Edition. If the request is for business or industrial uses, are such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities? And as commercial, this does bring the potential for additional job opportunities and commercial retail shopping, including restaurants, to that area. Is the subject property suitable for the uses in the current zoning to which it has been restricted? And the zoning was a zoning classification for the county, and when annexed, it defaults to R1 upon entry into the city. This zoning classification is highly restrictive and could not allow mixed-use developments as a single-family rural residential. Item 12 is to what extent would the removal of restrictions, i.e. approval of the zoning request, detrimentally affect other properties in the neighborhood? And in reviewing the Seasons residential neighborhood, which is abutting Tanganika Wildlife Park, which is zoned PUD and has mixed uses, particularly with animal habitation, to see if there was any impact on the appraised value from 2009 when the park had its greatest appraised value due to construction. The properties in the Seasons were measured from the center of the lot to the center of Tanganika Wildlife Park and rank ordered by distance. The distance was being compared and improved value of the property in a regression mean analysis to determine if the distance from the park affected the value. And that showed that the distance from the park was significant, but that it showed only a 1.3% variability from that mean. So it had little detrimental impact at all to its proximity to the park. It was also noted that the relationship was negative to the properties further away as predicted. Every further away from that point of Tanganika reference lost $3.37 on the approved value of the home. Would the request be consistent with the purpose of the zoning district classification and the intent and purpose of these regulations? And Article 4.107 planned unit development of our zoning code establishes greater flexibility for more creative and imaginative design developments than are traditionally found in a commercial C1 or C2. And following, the following outline is used for establishing planned unit development, which are in general harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning regulations in the comprehensive plan for the city. These districts typically allow typical land uses, densities, open space requirements, and other elements, which may vary from those applicable to any other districts within the established regulations for the city. And therefore, staff believes that this development is in conformance with the zoning district's purpose. And those purposes are then outlined in Section 1.101 of our zoning regulations. As you can see, the bullets from A through K. And staff believes that the development is in conformance with the intents and purposes of Article 1.01 of the planned unit development. Item 14 is, is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and does it further enhance the implementation of the plan? And staff believes that to be the case, as Page 16 of the comprehensive plan is to promote continued residential development to enlarge the tax base and strengthen the municipal capacity to provide quality public facilities. And the objective is to work with area developers to initiate new neighborhoods through planned unit development process. Page 17 of the comprehensive plan outlines the housing objectives to include providing for multiple-family dwellings, retirement housing, and other specialized housing as required to meet the needs of defined user groups within the community. Page 60 of the comp plan shows further land use map in this area as being a mix of commercial and residential. What's the nature of the support or opposition to the request? And the general support comes in the desire to increase the tax base for both the city and those residential and commercial buildings, which is in line with the comprehensive plan. And the general opposition comes in the desire for the city to stay relatively unchanged in the land use composition of single-family detached and larger lots. Item 16 is, is there any information or are there recommendations on this request available from professional persons or persons with related subject matter expertise, which would be helpful in the evaluation of the planned unit development application? And Mica, our city planner, who is out ill tonight, so you're stuck with the city administrator who grew up in finance and fire, so this is on the other end of things for me. Spoke with Brian Jackson, the senior planner for the city of Overland Park, and he said that a PUD can be considered a trade-off between the city and the developer, and that it's not unreasonable to ask for additional provisions in the PUD if it's deemed reflective of the comprehensive plan, like additional sidewalks, more trees, buildings abutting the street, including setbacks. And to encourage pedestrian engagement. Like comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, or general welfare outweigh the loss in property value? Or be hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request? And the development is for residential and commercial mixed use and does not pose a serious threat to the health, safety, or welfare by its use. And this shows a map of our comprehensive plan and future land use for 2025 with this purple dot dash box and the star indicating the subject property. And this is the map that you saw previously, which shows the surrounding area and the items under consideration for this development. And for the audience, and I should have said at the beginning, we have, if you go to GoddardKS.gov, you'll be able to download a digital copy of the agenda packet, which has these handouts and the staff report that I'm droning on about. More narrative context, and you can get a better picture of that. And that can be through GoddardKS.gov, go to the Agenda Center, Planning Commission, and for this evening's meeting. And this is a concept of what would be envisioned, with 183rd being at the bottom. And you can see there's where the high-pressure gas lines are, they run through. And it's got the 190-degree crossing. And this would be Prairie Sunset Trail with US 54400 to the north. And again, this is included as a handout in the agenda report.
So, sorry, Jim.
We'll allow you. Can I finish? I'm sorry. The public notice was given, incurring a small cost for financial consideration. The petitions, notice of public hearing, have been reviewed by City Legal, who approves this to form. And staff's recommendation would be to approve the rezoning request. And that vote would actually occur after the conduct of the public hearing. So at this time, I will turn it over to the applicant representative, I believe Phil Baughman. Sorry, Phil Meyer of Baughman's here. Sorry, Phil.
Not first time. And if you want, yeah, there you go. That's the page I want. That'll work perfect. Evening. Phil Meyer with Baughman, with Baughman Company, agent for the applicant here tonight. So what we're presenting to you tonight is the planned unit development for, that shows our overall development. We could have achieved this through multiple zone change cases where we come in and we ask for your commercial zoning, and we ask for your multifamily zoning, and we ask for your single-family smaller lot zoning. But in working with the city, we thought, since it's a comprehensive development to us, and we wanted to put the whole thing together as one piece, that the planned unit development was the right tool. Let's the planning commission and city council see what we're trying to do. And so if you look at this, and I'll start at the north, which is the left, the parcel one and parcel two, everything north of the pipeline are commercial developments. Don't have specific uses, we could tell you today. We've got a lot of things we're working on, but nothing's set in stone yet. So that's standard commercial uses that we'd like to put in there with restaurants and some retail in that area. We also, if you go down to parcel three along 183rd south of Park Pipeline, parcel four is more of your standard commercial opportunities that could occur there. Then you jump over, you got five, six, and seven, which we're kind of looking at patio homes at this time to do in those locations. Eight would be townhome development. Nine would be a multifamily apartment complex. As you can tell with this concept, we have a lot of open space. Two reasons. One, there is some floodplain that we've got to work with, and it fits into reserves nicely, so we can handle that and not create any problems. Two, you can tell with the sidewalk system center and the design, we want a walkable community, and we intentionally have open space along the roadways, just to give it a little more character. We do have a little higher density residential than you find with your standard R1 single-family. But it's still residential mainly on the south end down there, with that parcel four being the exception right along 183rd. With that, I'm going to stop for a minute and see if you have any questions that I can answer. answer for you.
You said the parcel five would be single-family.
Patio home, patio home development, yeah. I think the picture's self-explanatory, but after you listen to neighbors, if you have, I don't know if those are rebuttal time in your system or not, if you have additional questions for me, and I'll be glad to come answer those for you.
We might call you back in to answer some questions.
And that'll be just fine. Excuse me.
Thank you. And now we will open the public hearing for comments. Are the publics invited to offer comment for three minutes? And please state your name and address, and we have a pen and paper, if you could print your name and address for the record. And at that point, I'll turn it over to the chairperson to open the public hearing.
At this point, we'll open the public hearing. Anything related to this development.
Do we need to go up here?
Yes, ma'am.
Stand up here and state your name and address.
I'm Jacqueline Cook, and I live at 1732 South 167th Street West. And I just, I have a question about the gentleman Baughman that just came up here with his map. Is that 167th up there, or is that like, doesn't go to 167?
No, ma'am. This is 183rd, and 167th is still over a half a mile over here.
Okay.
And the properties along 167th will be considered as items F2, 3, and 4 in our next items of business.
Okay. And before I interrupted you, my question was, is everything that's in your PowerPoint presentation, I can find that on the Goddard?
In the, in the staff report form, yes, ma'am.
My only thing is, is we have a farm. And with the development of Walmart, that pushed a lot of property or water on our property and caused like an Arkansas River flooding on our property. And I don't know if the Goddard development or if it was Sejra County development, they opened up that bridge, and nobody took into consideration to where the watersheds are. And I don't know if those are those watersheds.
These are along, no, that's too far. These are along the trail. So the trail would be over here. And as a general rule, the flow lines, generally speaking, from the south of the trail flows south, and from the north of the trail flow north. And then this essentially goes into the cap skin, and then on into the cow skin, through the Dry Creek Basin, and on into the Arkansas.
Okay. So my concern is, is that the more the development, that there is either it's going to, A, cause more flooding to my property, which my basement has flooded times two already, and pushed the water tables, I mean, up through the cracks of my basement, which I didn't have that problem before the development of Walmart. And then secondly, if they, you know, do that development and they put in more little watersheds to capture stuff, well, that's going to rob my livestock of water. So that's something that I would like to take into consideration. But I think that a lot of this is going to come with maybe the next presentation that you're going to do with the development of a residential and an apartment complex across street, too. So I guess I'll wait for that to be brought up in this meeting. You want me to write down everything?
Just your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
I had a question on the businesses. I don't know how this works, but does the city have the ability to approve or deny which businesses go in there? No?
No.
Okay. So hypothetically, and this is a hypothetical situation, we have a business in there that the community doesn't think is appropriate. You know, God knows what that could be, but if we can't deny certain businesses and they put something in there that we just didn't like, and it was a good fit for the community, I mean, on what avenue would we have, I suppose, to address something like that? And the reason I ask is because when I look at this, like, this looks nice, but you could put, you could put pretty much anything in there, like patio homes, like, what is the dollar value of a patio home? Like, are we talking like a high-end, or are we talking like a low-end? To get a contextual idea of what this actually does to the community, right? Those are apartment buildings, like, is that a $1,500 a month rent on an apartment building? Or is that like a $750 a month rent on an apartment building? Because it makes a difference. How do we understand some of that information before we can really say that we like this idea as a community or not? Is that made available? Are there estimates for that kind of thing that we can review, that can kind of give us an idea of what's actually going on in there, rather than just kind of a snapshot
This is really just for the PUD part. All the rest of that will come through individual, have to get approval for the apartment complex on its own.
And each land use has specific industry types, which are, you know, conditioned for that use. So you won't worry about in a commercial zone putting in a rendering plant or, you know, a corporate hog farm. So those kinds of things are restricted by use type. But as far as denying a dry cleaner or retail sales or a restaurant in a C1 area is something that is allowed for that general use, yes.
So the premise is this, but then the specifics are down the line?
Yeah.
They still have to flat it, so.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
My concern about all this here is, is the Goddard water system and the sewer system capable of taking, we've already got issues with incompatible water when bringing this into the system. Are we going to have to look at a new sewer plant? Are we looking at, we get our water at 119th Street at the well. Have we thought about that ahead of the development? Or, you know, is the Goddard citizen's going to be locked in on a completely new water system and sewer system on this? I mean, it looks good, but it's still a little town Goddard. We get our well water at 119th Street. We all know that. I'm just kind of curious myself about that.
And that is one of the 17 conditions that were reviewed to show that the existing infrastructure in place is adequate to meet the demands of not only this development, but the existing load and the items under consideration here this evening. And in fact, we're in the process of perfecting two of our four wells' water rights, so additional consumption would be beneficial at this point.
Correct me if I'm wrong, was the sewer plant built much bigger?
Yes. We anticipate a population, not to mention commercial load, of approximately 8,000 to 10,000 people before we would need to begin to consider a plant expansion at that point, which would simply be the additional basin. So that was the whole point in 2006 and '07, when the City Council, which was prior to my arrival in 2008, opted to go with the plant that they did, is, it is designed so that they can simply add basins to the existing structure at minimal cost. And so it was designed to be expanded upon. But we don't foresee that at this time, and we watch our influence and our affluence not only daily, but, you know, we have weekly and monthly as well, and that's all reported to KD each.
So we don't see any increase on sewer, develop a new sewer plant, new water system? All looks good.
Two or three years ago?
Pardon?
The extra water tank we added?
Yes, we added an extra 500,000, and we are looking at adding additional capacity just for, essentially for help, to help with stable, stabilize pressure in outlying areas, as well as to make certain that we have excess capacity as needed, just in the event, so that we can fireflow different areas and not have to worry about there being a fire in one area. Because prior to, the three-minute time is up, but I'll finish my statement, which is that prior to all of this expansion of the water system, you had one 12-inch line from those wells running down catalog that only filled your water tank once everyone had taken from it, which was why there was a continual water crisis every year. And so we spent the time and the money to put in a dedicated 16-inch supply line to essentially make sure that that system is stable and that the tanks are full. So we have not had a water crisis since about 2009, and I arrived in 2008.
I'm just concerned, citizen.
Well, I appreciate you standing up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Rick Shear, 18121, Mass. Timeview Drive. I live just south of this proposed development. I'm a lifelong resident of Goddard, born and raised here, which is more years than I care to count. But I guess my main concern, and maybe echo kind of what he said about this, is maybe the lack of clarity of what these additions are going to be. Because the people that I know that live in the Highview Drive addition, Breeze Meadow North, yeah, north, just south of this, we all enjoy being in the county. We want to continue being in the county for as long as we can. And I just know that if this gets filled with lower-income housing, and I'm all for growth and development and opportunity, but that will be a negative impact on our value. Just where we are adjacent to this type of addition is a concern for me. And I don't know that I have a question, and then just to make the comment that I don't, if this were confirmed, that these were 300, 400, $500,000 houses going in next to our type of value homes, I think I would be okay with it. But that lack of clarity is concerning to me, so.
I would encourage you, if you have the time to speak with Mr. Skoggins when he gets back, he can talk to you more in depth about that concern.
Okay.
He's done some significant research and looking into that.
Yeah.
And he has way more.
Well, in general, our houses are between 500 and 3/4 of anything.
Yes, and he can comment about how they value them and how they would be viewed from here to anything built in this particular neighborhood. And I don't know that that will appease you or make you, you know, be here what you want to hear. There'll definitely be additional information.
Yeah. I just don't want average next to excellent.
Yep.
And I don't believe that, definitely, I don't believe low income was on the table. I don't need to speak for the developer, but at least in our initial conversations.
Low income is probably a better choice of words on my part. Something that's relative.
You wanted above the mean.
Relative, no, right at the mean is fine.
Yeah. I think, I think that.
I'd love above the mean, that'd be great.
That is what's being efficient, is add or remove.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see my friend Chris back there, who lives close to it. Did you have anything to say?
I'm going to echo what he says. So I live at 17,900 West Highview, and the same thing, I mean, I'm going to pretty much echo what he's saying, pretty much about the value. You know, the houses and the commercial, I don't think you can stop that. That's fine. The multifamily, I think, is where a lot of us are probably going to have a problem with duplexes, any kind of apartments. And I know the runoff, somebody echoed something about this going north? I don't think it goes north. I mean, I have a house right there where I've got one of the drainage pipes that go underneath of the walkway, and it fills my pond and the neighbor's pond and goes past this. And that's coming north of me, which we're a little bit east of this. I'm one house east, I believe, is that the hedgerow though?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is the hedgerow. I'm assuming this north part's kind of that hedgerow that runs in there?
Yes.
Yeah. So I'm one house past that to the east, and we have a lot of water.
And the water flows north?
What's that?
The water's flowing north.
Well, and I know, I know from running that it, it comes, it enters the rail bed and then travels down, and then.
And that's possible.
Your culvert, and then I think there's another culvert further down to the east that, that they had a field crossing or something there, the farmers to go across. And I think that's where some of that infiltration's occurring.
Yeah, and some of that water might be coming from the field to the east of this. So I don't know about this area, but I know a lot of water comes.
That water right there has always been super saturated.
Yeah. So there's a lot of water comes through. Now, it drains fine, it comes through and fills up the ponds and keeps going south. So we really haven't had a problem with too much. But this could definitely cause problems for that if it's not done right, you know, with the engineering firm. I don't know where they're planning to go with all that water. Is that what those are? The retains. Yeah, I get that.
Chris, Chris, could we get you to?
So do we know, Mr. Boston? Other than your office?
I'll come up and answer that if anybody.
So that would be one of my questions, is where that water's going to go.
Technically, they work with Harlan, the city engineer, on all that water runoff, where it's going to go, how it's going to go, the detainments, and it's all going to be signed off by Harlan before it even goes.
They're the county standard, and so we try and get additional retention for what's required, because we, we know that it's, it's a slippery slope, and as you add as well.
Sure.
You always have some unintended consequences, and somebody will do something in the field to the east.
Sure.
It'll disrupt the flow. So I know, I'll defer to Phil during the rebuttal after Overland's questions, because that's above my.
Right. No, that's fine. So, you know, of course, the drainage part, and then, I'm on his side, too. I moved out here from Wichita to get away from the chaos. I don't, I'm not knocking duplexes or apartments, but it brings a lot of traffic to the area and a lot of people. And that's not why I came out here. So, you know, site homes, not a big deal. It's going to be the multifamily that I would have, you know, a problem with.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Cherry Berkamidge. I'm at 2341 South Leo Street. Moved out here, too, to be in the country and love the country. If all these homes go in and duplexes, I do worry about the value of our property. I have seen a tremendous amount of traffic, and there's people that come through Leo Street, and they're students, and they fly through there. And if there's little kids out, you know, we are in the country, and you think you'd be in a country road, you'd be safe. The city does nothing for us because we're the, we're the county. First of all, I don't know what part of these sections even relate to the city, because the county owns part of them. But here we are tonight, talking through the city. So part of that, if you look at it on the map, I can see where some of it's zoned for the city, and some of it's zoned for the county. But you guys don't do anything for us, but all this is going to happen around us. We got Pond E, we got 167th to 83rd, Pond E, and there is traffic coming through there like crazy. Those, there's no stoplights, we have a flashing red light, and there's been accidents down there. And I know, this is my first meeting, I'm nervous as hell, sorry.
You're fine.
But I just don't know all of you neighbors, but I think a lot of you have the same concerns that I do. And I think we need to stand up tonight together. This is why we moved out here. And I do think it would be nice for the city to grow and get some. And I do think it would be nice for the city to grow and get some restaurants and things like that that will benefit and bring people in, but yet I don't want to lose the value of my property. I moved out here because I wanted to retire. This is my savings. This is my long-term care when I can't stay in my home anymore. And if I don't have that, then why am I living out here? Because I don't know, I know my son's an appraiser, and he does farm ground. And he lives at Tyler's Landing, and they put these duplexes all around it. His value went up a little bit, but it still hurt him, and he knows. So I know my son's an appraiser, and he can fill me in on this. I know John Dugan unsat landed 167.
Not anymore.
Not anymore?
No.
No, he sold it because they're doing, they're doing more of it.
Okay, okay, okay.
It's the next.
Well, anyway, I know he has a lot of properties around here. But I just, I feared for all of us, I feared for the little kids out there and even these high school kids. They're going to get hurt, something's going to happen. So I'll put these out.
So the region of cities of Goddard's involved, these have been annexed into the city.
So what are you doing about our area? Is there something that you're not telling us?
No, there's nothing we can do about it.
You're unincorporated, and in fact.
Well, I mean, I'm just trying to clear it out.
As I understand, I arrived in 2008, and I was curious as to why these nice homes were literally across the street from the city and not in. And it took some research, and it appeared that when Marie Meadows was initially platted, the desire was to come into the city, but at that time, the city of Goddard didn't want to grow. And so that's why Marie Meadows has rural water rather than city water, and it's developed unincorporated rather than within the city. So at least during our tenure, given that initial interaction, we have opted not to pursue any sort of growth with either side, either of the Marie Meadows on 23rd. And you know, the only time we might actually consider doing something proactively is something like what we're seeing on the north side of town, and that's where Wichita is actually there. So if we don't actually bring folks in, then at that time, you'll be in the city of Wichita. So that's, that would be the only time we would probably look at doing something proactively with you unless someone wanted to come here. But at this, at this time, there's no plans.
Well, I hope there's no change to our area.
So.
I, but I can't.
So just to clarify, you're not opposed to the PUD off of 183rd?
Well, I am for the value of our property, for us around here.
Okay.
I would hope that it would be upscale, you might say.
Sure.
You know, like Rick was saying earlier, I would sure hope that. You know, there's things going all around. And I do want, I want it to grow, I want it to grow, but I just want it to be upscale and that our value doesn't go down on our property. You know, we all have our own septic systems. I feel sorry for the lady here that's going to have, that has flooding, you know? I feel sorry for her.
Sorry, is there anyone else?
My name's Kevin Voech, 18001 West US Highway 54. I'm directly, our house is directly north of this. This has been, the expansion out there has been coming for a long time. We've been, had a government overlay over our property where we couldn't build for a long time. Still, our house burned down, we couldn't rebuild. The north side of this looks awesome to me for us. That's exactly what we want going in there, is commercial stuff, so our property value goes up when we sell the estate. Because, and you know, we've been hearing about this since 1996. I lived out there when Holy Spirit was in the Kwanzaa hut across the street from the house, you know? Before all these developments were there, I used to ride my dirt bike all over back there. So the north side of it looks good to me, and I just wanted to put that in there.
You put your name and address down, but.
Thank you.
Dealey 2531 Leo Circle. What I want to know is, okay, we're, we're on Leo Circle on the Marry's Meadow. We're on rural route four, and what we want, we do not want to be put on, we just are curious if we would be put on the city of water, you know, Goddard city water? Because we don't want that, because it eats holes in the wiring, you know? And we just don't want any of that, and we just want to know if we'd be able to stay on, you know, rural route for water? Because that's what we want, so we just have that question.
You would stay on rural water? You're not being annexed into the city, so you can stay on rural water? This would have no effect on your water whatsoever? You're welcome, thank you.
And you were talking about possible Wichita coming in?
Yeah, Wichita's coming this way.
So it's either going to be Wichita or Goddard eventually?
Yep. Do you want to have anything in for reference to item F1, the PUD?
What's your predictions of that?
We don't have them.
Five years, 10 years?
Let's not, a cup of tea.
They're getting closer quick, that's all I can tell you.
Yeah, they're already across 167th and May, so.
They do developments out of the schools, are they 167th? That's Wichita.
Would that eliminate number four water though, in that area, of Wichita, Goddard?
Depends.
Possible, yes.
The way the statute reads, that could go either way. Depends on whether it would be, but usually, yes, once you come into a city, you go onto their water, including the fire protection system.
Okay.
Anybody else relating to this one? Close the public notice on that?
Yes, sir.
Close the public notice on item F1?
Now it would be to consider the recommendation with, to approve the rezoning request for zoning case, zoning case 22 dash four. And that can be done with a motion and a second and a voice vote.
Can we ask Mr. Myers something?
Yes, Mr. Myers, can you come back up?
Yes, sir.
Do you have questions for me?
Just addressing some of the flooding and the water that they were, that was being discussed. Yeah, so my standard speaks to that. Tonight, we're here to talk about land, but the next step, if the land use is approved, then we go into the plating process. And during the plating process, we have to prove to the city engineer and meet your drainage requirements that we detain the difference between pre and post development on the property. And that's easily done on this side. We have way more drainage detention than is necessary from pure calculations if you look at both of sides of those lakes and the green space we have. But what we're going to do is detain the difference between pre-development and post-development, then release the downstream at a control grade, is how they do that. And there are the book of computations that are put together to show your city engineer that we're meeting the requirements of the city government. All the cities in this region have basically the same requirements on that, so.
So show us the retention ponds. We believe we know what they are, but it's kind of hard to read from here.
So that's retention pond?
That's a detention-retention pond, and that's a retention-retention pond. Many of those are going to hold water all the time. This is the areas where we can hold additional water if we choose and need to on the difference between pre and post. But I can comfortably tell you that with the size of this pond and the size of this pond, we can handle all the drainage requirements for site distance. That's above normal, which I see myself with.
Does anybody else have a question to Mr. Myers?
No question.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I ask one question?
The public parts actually close right now?
Yeah.
So this is just the classification of rezoning at this point?
I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning of the request for case number zone 22 dash four.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is a public hearing for the consideration of rezoning from a C2 general business and I1 industrial to an R4 high-density residential for case number zone 22 dash six. And this is the area under consideration, with Kellogg being on the north side, Prairie Sunset Trail to the south, 167th bordering the east side. That's the city of Wichita here, and I believe they're back about a mile or so this way, mile and a half. And this would be the north side of Marie Meadows. And that might even be Chris's drainage pipe. But showing that the two parcels under consideration are one, single family and the type of home, and are four density, showing the type of residence. Baughman has submitted an application on behalf of developer Paul Kelsey for the rezoning of one tract of land from industrial to, and commercial too, to R4 high-density residential and R1 single-family detached. The land's generally located on the west side of 167th, north of the Prairie Trail, Prairie Sunset Trail, and south of US 54. The land's approximately 50 acres and is intended to be developed into single-family detached housing and twin homes with smaller lots. The development's scheduled to be all owner occupied dwellings, introducing different housing types for ownership while working around the odd shape of the tract of land. Final consideration for the zoning request will go before the city council. And again, these are the same considerations that you previously saw for that rezoning. And that gets to what's the character and condition of the subject property. And it's essentially surrounded by ag ground and a walking trail, and a section's dedicated for the future bypass US 54400, including a cloverleaf, with no plans at this point to go south and no ride-of-way programs either. So to when that would actually occur, we don't have a timeline. Current zoning of the subject property in the surrounding neighborhood is zone industrial district, C2 general business, with the east zoning being single-family 20. And that's 20,000 foot lots, and that's a county zoning classification. And to the south, the zoning is I1 industrial district, and further south is rural residential. To the west, the zoning is I1 industrial and C2 general business. And to the north, the land is US 54400 Kellogg. The length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped and vacant is zoned is a factor for consideration, perhaps possibly. The land zoned I1 industrial district and C2 general business, this classification seen most of its development closer to Goddard Galleria off of 183rd and 199th along Goddard Road in the industrial park. US 54400 has not had much commercial development or industrial development east of 183rd and west of 151st. And that is obviously currently in the process of changing, but at this time still has not materialized. Would the request correct an error in the application of these regulations? And that answers no. Number five is, is the request caused by change or changing conditions in the area of the subject property? And if so, what's the nature and significance of such change or changing conditions? And that's, yes, we're experiencing our growth, and as a result of that, this additional housing meets those demands. Does adequate sewage disposal and water supply and all necessary public facilities, including street access, exist? Or can they be provided to serve these areas that would be permitted on the subject property? And that is yes. Petitions for specials will be submitted per the statutes, and we have an abutting arterial on 167th that's paved. Would the subject property need to be platted or replatted in lieu of dedications made for rights of way easements, access control, or building setback lines? And that's yes, the land is unplatted, and we go through the plating process for the necessary dedications, reserves, easements, and engineering review. Would screening, would a screening plan be necessary for existing or potential uses of the subject property? And that's no, because screening is required for multifamily commercial. Multifamily is considered three units or greater in Article 2.102 dwelling multifamily. That's defined as a residential, a residential building containing three or more dwelling units. Is suitable vacant land or buildings available or unavailable for development that currently has the same zoning as requested? And that's yes, there are approximately 460 acres of vacant R1 land available. However, each tract of R1 land comes with challenges for development or sale. R4 land is approximately four acres. Item 10 for considerations, if the request is for business or industrial uses, are such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities? And that's non-applicable as it is a residential development. Item 11 says, is the subject property suitable for uses in its current zoning, to which it has been restricted? And that's no, C2 only allows for multifamily developments in conjunction with commercial or mixed use or apartments, condos. I1 does not allow for residential use of any sort. Item 12 for considerations, to what extent would the removal of the restrictions, the approval of the zoning request detrimentally affect other properties in the neighborhood? And that's neighborhoods are defined by the county as individual developments and are classified with neighborhood number. Abutting neighborhoods would not be compared to the proposed development for appraisal purposes. There would be increased traffic along 167th Street. Item 13 is, would the request be consistent with the purposes of the zoning district classification and the intent and purposes of these regulations? Article 4.101 defines R1 as a district established for the purpose of medium-density, single-family dwelling use to allow certain community facilities, and is intended that no uses be permitted in the district that will tend to devalue the property or residential purposes or interfere with the health, safety, order, or general welfare of the persons residing therein. Regulations are intended to control the density of population and to provide adequate open space around building structures to accomplish these purposes. Staff believes this development is in conformance with the zoning district purpose, Article 4.103B, R4 residential, high-density district. This district is designed for the placement of houses and mixed-use developments to be designed in terms of maximizing pedestrian experience and creating higher value density. Design creativity is encouraged to generate more value and increase housing stock variability. And then items A through K from Article 1.101 with respect to the conformance within the zoning district purpose. And we believe that it conforms not only with the zoning district but with the subdivision regulations and their intents and purposes as well. Item 14, is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and does it further enhance the implementation of the plan? Page 16 of the comprehensive plan, again, talks about the goal of promoting continued residential development to enlarge the tax base and strengthen the municipal capacity to provide quality public facilities. Page 17 of the comprehensive plan outlines housing objectives to include providing for multiple-family dwellings, retirement housing, and other specialized housing as required to meet the needs of defined user groups within the community. Page 60 of the comprehensive plan shows the future land use map in this area as commercial and residential. What is the nature of support or opposition to this request as item 15? And that's general support comes in the area to, the desire to increase the tax base as well as to diversify our housing stock. General opposition comes in the desire of the city to stay unchanged and that its land use composition of single-family detached housing and have larger lots, so. Item 16 is, is there any information or are there? Item 16 is, is there any information or are there recommendations on this request available for professional persons or persons with related experience? And typical planning practices encourages what's referred to as the missing middle, which simply means the introduction of more diversified residential uses like duplex, twin homes, patio homes, row homes, and, you know, diversified housing options. By comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, general welfare outweigh the loss in property value or hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request? And that is that the development is for residential use and does not pose a serious threat to the health, safety, or welfare by its use, meaning it's not an industrial or commercial use where you're going to have, you know, dying operations or rendering plant going in. And this shows our future land use map for the comprehensive plan with the purple dot-dash parcel and the car. And you can kind of see the protective overlay that MAPD and KDA has put in for that area.
And that protective overlay is for what?
That's a highway protective overlay. The housing stock, this would be your multifamily. And an example of your single-family detached. And again, a map of the first picture that we show with the R4 high-density and the R1 single-family. Public notice was given for this public hearing, so there was a small cost. The documents have been approved by the city attorney, reviewed by the city attorney who approves this to form, and it would be staff's recommendation that the rezoning request, case number 22-6, be approved at a vote that will occur after the public hearing. And at this time, I'll turn it over to the developer's representative, Mr. Phil Meyer of Baughman.
Evening, Phil Meyer with Baughman Company, agent for the applicant. If I can, I'm going to go back to this picture, because it probably, this is the best one to look at. I'm going to start with what I consider are basics from a land use standpoint. This zone change here, both of these for the R4 and the R1 is a downzoning from commercial to industrial. So if we're going to talk about traffic, we're going to talk about drainage, we're going to talk about infrastructure, all of those items are reduced by downzoning to residential uses. Because today, you can do commercial and industrial uses in there, which can be very intense in all, all facets of infrastructure, traffic, sewer usage, water usage, you know, a lot of that. With industrial, you can have manufacturing and other uses that can occur. So there's, a lot heavier uses are allowed there today. We're asking you to downzone that to allow residential uses. This area here is the R4, which he wants to do the twin home owner occupied concept. So you see here, that is this taken, I don't know that we gave those to Micah, or Micah had talked to the applicant and took them. I honestly don't know that, but that's cloverleaf. That's the same concept they want to do in this triangle, is what you see at cloverleaf. Then it would be the same single-family that would occur at this location. All access will be off of 167th for both of these parcels, having one somewhere in here and one down, one or two here for the single-family. This is the rails, the trails that goes through there and it starts heading up closer to Kellogg as you go further east. With that, all stop and answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any more to go on this.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'll turn it over to Chairman Graffing to open the public hearing for the public that is invited to offer comment on this rezoning application, to rezone a tract of land from C2 general business district, I1 industrial district, to R1 residential and R4 high-density residential, allowing for the development of single-family detached housing.
This moment will welcome the public hearing for anything related to item F2, today's agenda.
So I'm Wade Blankenship, 16400 Door Court. I live just east, on the other side of once you step from this place. My primary concern with all of this would be traffic. I don't know how many of you guys go down 167th, getting in and out of those schools. During rush hour is a nightmare. I think anybody who's gone through there has probably seen a semi blow through that red light more than once. There's almost always wreckage debris. I got a memorial to this day on that corner of a girl who died when I was in high school at that intersection. And now you want to cry on a few more hundred people down a two-lane road on 167th? I also lose my mailbox probably once or twice a year, just from people going up and down that road. So that would be a huge concern of mine is, is traffic. You know, what's, what would be done to alleviate that if you did do this? And then beyond that, the next main question I would have would be more, the multifamily housing that you have there, that's all fine and all, and those look like, you know, nice things, but what happens to those in 10 years? I mean, are we all going to kid ourselves and pretend like they're going to just stay nice and be great forever? I mean, you've already got an issue at the, I think, one of those trailer parks, right? Had a gun-involved incident at a bus stop earlier this year. I mean, there's just, it's going on and on, and they're putting more in by the high schools, even it sounds like. So what's going on there? So those would be my two primary concerns, is what are we doing with all this multi-housing stuff? And what would we do to change the traffic if we're going to just start stuffing more people into the same fish barrel?
I'm already up there, so if we're talking about that green spot with 167th and 18th, then I think that that's a same concern, just like you talked earlier, is the traffic. You know, there's, there's just too much traffic in a small amount of area. You know, it's, it's very congested there. And I, I agree with him that at Kellogg, 167th, I had, the truck just kept plodding through. He had plenty of time, he went right through them twice. I've had that with semis. I, I just think a lot of traffic in those two-lane roads.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything for item F2?
I'm just going to speak again to that. I live directly across there, about 13 acres that-
Can you repeat again, I'm sorry? Your name?
My name is Jacqueline Cook.
Okay, thank you.
This is my property right here. And that, there's like a, about right here, there's a creek culvert that comes through and feeds my pond right here. So this is my house that floods now since Walmart came into play. And I don't know how this is going to be developed, but if it's developed, I mean, this could, I mean, affect me and my livestock and my livelihood with the water supply, either flooding my grassland for my cattle or taking away from my cattle. Plus, having the multi, you know, homes there, it's going to decrease my property value. I have a problem with the traffic as well. I've already had somebody come out and take all of my livestock fencing down to replace it from individuals coming up and down that street, so. I'm totally against that.
Thank you.
So Bree's had, I guess, a question on, on vision. You know, when I think of growth in a, a small town like this, I think of other examples like, like in Andover, right? Andover's pretty nice, you got a lot of high-end housing, you got a lot of people with money leaving Wichita, and they're not generally coming this way so much as maybe they're going to Andover. And I, I guess, what is the vision for Goddard? And when I think of the vision for Goddard, I would want to aim really high. And I don't think that the multi-housing stuff is really the direction that I would want to go. I would want to have more single-family residences that are maybe higher value, nicer homes. That's probably what I would try to attract if I came, essentially, not, obviously. And I wonder how much is enough, right? Because if we're talking here, then the first place we talked about is going to have, you know, apartment complexes. Do you have all those multifamily places that look like they're going in right off Kellogg? How much, how much is enough? And does it ever stop, right? And at what point do we feel like we have enough multi-housing? And is it ever get to be too much, where we're using our square footage in a way that maybe is not the most official long-term, right? If we're really trying to grow in a, in a direction to compete with other towns? So that would be my comment.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brennan Davis at 2440 South Leo Circle. If you look at this map and you talk about all of the things that are going on, so the things that have been said is, we're country people. We moved out here to enjoy country life. We built these houses to enjoy country life. And I was to other people coming out here and moving. In one fell swoop, you are feeling this, you are feeling this. And you've got a big tract down here of massive, immense houses. Can you imagine the impact on us? And maybe you don't care because we're not in the city, but that offends me greatly. In one fell swoop, all of a sudden, we're surrounded by things that terrify us, so please keep that in mind.
Thank you. 2531 Leo Circle. I like what he said. We need, the planning commission needs to have a plan. Have you been to Derby? I mean, that town looks clean. It's got nice apartment complexes, it's organized, and like he's saying, those, those look nice now, but 10 years down the road. Let's have a map of Goddard. Let's make it look like Derby, Andover. I mean, those peoples made a plan for a long term. This is Goddard, this is our town. Let's make it stand out when people come through it. That thing they're building down the road with the duplexes across from that old bowling alley, I can't believe they used that nice land for duplexes. That could have been a real nice apartment complex. And people know how to run apartment complexes. They don't have to be slums. Go into Derby, go into Andover, and look around before you guys start making these big plans here. The guy's making sense over here, and I'm just backing him up. And I've been to Derby, Andover. They're nice, they're clean, well-lined out, off course around the apartment complexes. Take a time, get in the Goddard car and drive to these other little towns, Mays, Derby, Andover, and let's follow their, their map. And instead of just putting a bunch of duplexes up and like man said, what's it going to look like in 10 years? I grew up in this town. I was here back in the 70s. Our city halls feel like it's sitting there. Build a nice city hall. Build a nice police department. When our cops pull up, they got a police department, they got a building. Make that in a senior citizen. Build city, well, this building, I guess, I'm sorry, say. But you guys need to look at the future of this town. It's going to be a long time. And when we get old, our kids are going to say, what did our planning commission think about? Look at the duplexes that were nice at one time. Think about it, man. Look at Derby, look at Andover, pump the brakes, and let's get it figured out right this time. Because it could be a very nice town for a long time. I'm just, it's my suggestion. I see what these other towns have done, and I think you guys are, just look at the whole picture. I see all this development. It could be very, very nice, but you guys need to think about what you're doing, because this is the future of this town. Up here on Kellogg, we could have nice buildings up there. Here, the planning commission, this is what you do if you want to build a building in Goddard. Look at Andover. I mean, they got standards out there. Derby, they got standards. But you kind of, we're going to have, we're going to have duplexes, we're going to have townhomes. I mean, take a break, think about what you guys are doing. Long-term, okay? You can make a nice city hall.
Sir, you have three minutes.
Oh, okay, sir. I just got sorry here. All right. Thank you.
Lauren Barney, 1702 167. As a real estate agent, I can tell you, you probably need to have some consideration for the high-density residential. He said they're going to be owner-occupant. As real estate agent, I can tell you, California's buying them. I manage several, and they will not maintain their integrity after a certain amount of time. I do not know how they're going to hold to an owner-occupant requirement. A lot of your developments have no, no rentals for a period of time, and then they can go into a rental. But to be different from Mays and Goddard, or God, Mays and Andover, you're not going to be saturated with duplexes, which is what is happening, is we are saturated with those duplexes. 1,225 square feet maximum, no basements, slab flooring. They're selling them for about 360 for both sides, and people are buying them because they're brand new, but eventually they're not going to be brand new. So you're getting higher in renters right now because they're paying $1,600 a month for one side, but when they decrease in aesthetics, you're going to start renting them for 1,000 to 1,200 depending. So I would say the reconsideration of the high-density should be considered because you can't keep the owner-occupant mantra for sure. I mean, I guarantee you, there's all estate people buying them. Fontana, no, is Fontana? Yes, across from Fontana, nice in homes. Put all these duplexes, a guy from California bought them, they didn't appraise. So now they're selling them individually. So that would be my thing. You can't, people, you can't stop development, it's going to happen. So you, you know, what the plan is for the 183rd is great, but I think that high-density has to be a consideration because that brings in your renters. And, and there's got to be apartments and rental opportunities, but you're going to, we're just saturated with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Sarah Ming, 2250 Leo Street. I appreciate what she said, because my concern is with high-density housing, we've all seen it happen. It goes in, it's nice, and then it goes downhill, and then you have a lower-income situation coming in. We already have multifamily duplexes going in on 215th. I know 199th over by Eisenhower may not be in Goddard's situation, but it's in our circle of influence, in our circle of where we all live, work, and do what we do. We live and work in this community because we're proud of Goddard, and we want to continue to be proud of Goddard. We want to be able to attract people and businesses that are going to enhance our community. And I'm concerned that if we are bringing in too much multifamily homes, over time, we're going to see a decrease. We're going to see the problems that we see in Wichita and other communities that are saturated with low-income housing, because that's what it'll end up being eventually, potentially. And that leads to higher crime rates and all the other consequences that all of us are trying to avoid. So my question is, and my concern is, are we trying to build a Goddard that is going to encourage people to move in, encourage people to come and work and live in our school districts, and encourage the quality of life that people in Goddard appreciate now? And is what we're doing with this going to enhance that? Or would it be better to work, move towards more single-family residential that's going to keep the city of Goddard attracting people instead of driving them to other communities like the communities with these problems have, that are all coming here? And then we end up chasing longtime residents who've supported our community, and overall the community goes downhill? And we don't want to see that for anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on F2 before we move on to?
Harley Perry, 2601 Leo Circle. I have a question on the roads. Who has the responsibility for developing the plan for road maintenance and expansion? Specifically for 167th, south of Kellogg to 23rd and then 23rd over to 183rd?
County Township.
How does that factor in? Thank you, we were said that. How does that factor into this plan development? Is there somebody here that can answer?
23rd is maintained by the county.
Yes. Well, the county sends the township notices as to what they will maintain and won't maintain. And with respect to the city of Wichita, when they annex, they traditionally annex to the right-of-way line and not the roadway. And that's how they could be across 167th, and yet you'll see a quarter mile east of 167th, the city limits sign. So, but what the city of Goddard does is, and it varies on case-by-case as to whether we take our half of the lane or the whole lane, but historically, we've taken the half of the road that is on the city side coming in. So, that southbound lane would be up for, or would be in the city. And then the county and/or the township would maintain the other half. And what we've done in the past, like what we did at 23rd, we actually just, we just did the repair and then the township ended up reimbursing us.
So, my question specifically is this. Neither 23rd Street between 183rd and 167th, nor 167th between 23rd and Kellogg is suited for the type of traffic that the occupancy of these homes will produce?
It has a county right-of-way, but its surface is a paved urban surface. It's not an urban design wherein you have curb and gutter and stormwater and all of that.
I understand that. My point is like on 23rd where we are just south of the map there on 23rd Street, where our road on Leo empties onto 23rd, it's a roll of the dice every time you try to drive out there on a school day. The drag strip between 183rd and 167th. I understand, but this is the area that you're zoning or discussing to zone to bring in more houses. And the roadway doesn't support it. I'm just saying, there needs to be a harmonized plan, not just, like too many places that you see in other areas of our community, they add housing, they add businesses, and then later they come back in and decide they need to do something about the roads and then disrupt everything to then improve the roads to suit the traffic. I'm just asking for a comprehensive plan because, again, this is where we live. And the lady who had the property that was on 167th, that roadway right there as well has a severe dip in it, right where they're gonna be emptying all that traffic out. Waiting until all of those homes are in would be a poor planning choice to then wait to determine who owns the responsibility.
Thank you.
Not to mention if they fix 167th, they'd be chopping the front yard of everybody who lives on that road almost down the pond in half.
So, it would make sense to take it out where there's no residential homes now, would it?
One step up and write your name, man.
Don't really wanna write my name down. I agree with a lot of things. We're not gonna be able to stop.
Sir, could you just state your name?
My name is Bill and I live 16625 West 23rd Street. So, 167th Street, when I moved out here 10 years ago, was a dirt road. And I do not believe that it's adequate for what you're going to do to it because as we are moving in, the asphalt trucks are dumping asphalt on a dirt road and making it a chip-and-seal road. That is not a properly-designed road in the way that the asphalt was laid down there for the traffic that you're asking to put on it. Number two, on down further towards 23rd Street, we already have a problem when it rains that the water goes over the roadway. And so, without fixing the road in the first place, and I know we haven't even got to that addition we want to talk about down there, but that's, all the traffic's gonna flow in that area. Why not? And I agree that we can't stop this coming, but I agree with some of these other people that said, "Look, let's fix the roads now before we put all this in. And let's try to increase the value of the homes that we want to put in this area." Go over and look at 135th from Maple towards Central Street. That's the type of deal we need. We need three lanes, a center lane for turning. Does everybody agree to that? So, that's the type of stuff that we're asking for here, guys. We're not asking for you to just willy-nilly go out there and throw a bunch of damn houses up and all that. I like what's going on over around 183rd Street, but I also agree with the fact that we've gotta keep, we gotta keep our standards up in this area or we're gonna bring in the riffraff that we don't really have here now. We have a great school system and why do we want to bring in that kind of riffraff that's gonna lower this school system's standards? People agree?
Yep.
Okay. So, are you guys aware of how 167th Street's paved?
No.
Do you agree that it's gonna handle the traffic? Because right now, if you go down that street and you go down 23rd Street, which I'm assuming was done the same way, the asphalt's impending to, it's got a roll to it as you approach these stop signs. And that's happening because when it gets hot, that asphalt's not laid down with a good base. And I'm not an expert at this, but I drive the damn road every day. And with more traffic on there, it's not gonna get better. Do you agree?
I agree. I also agree that until something's developed, it, it's not gonna fix the road. There's no tax base to it for them to fix it.
So, then you should just leave it alone.
So, most of the traffic you guys are talking about that comes down on here, 23rd, is coming from Wichita. Had to be out of your schools.
That's not gonna change.
Oh, no. They stopped. They stopped. They don't go all the way to 183rd. They cut through Leo Street, go to the island. Then they go down to 183rd. So, they don't have to stop with all the traffic being backed up at 183rd and 20.
There's nothing anybody can do about somebody driving through.
I'm just telling you, the dust goes flying.
Sir, what was your point about the traffic coming east being from Wichita? What was your point there?
You talked about being overrun. It's already coming from Wichita this way. Every new housing addition they slap in coming west are coming to the Goddard schools. Anything south of Kellogg is coming to that school.
Agreed.
So, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Well, we're here to develop, to receive comment. And in fact, I think we've gone above and beyond because by statute and by hearing, if this were at the MAPD, you would not have a dialogue. So, if you come into Wichita and you go down to 455 North Main at 2:00 in the afternoon for your zoning case rather than in the evening after work, you would not be allowed to sit here and exchange comments with staff of the commissioners. You would get up, you would say your piece, you would sit down.
That's why we moved out.
So, what we're asking you to do now going forward is to come up, state your pace, state your piece, and sit down. Because we've tried to be civil and we've tried to keep this in orderly decorum, and I think it's close to jumping the rails. So, I would recommend that the commissioner stick to the letter of the law.
Sounds good. Anybody have anything else related to F2?
Well, I might as well. I'm Dawn Heck. I own two properties. I'm at 16501 West 23rd Street South and 16601 West 23rd Street South. I agree, I do not like the high-density residential development there. Do not, eventually, I agree with everybody else, it's going to end up, lower-income might look nice now, but later it won't. Traffic, I know you don't want to hear it, that is a problem. Water is a problem, I know. I can see it looks on this committee. When you have your basement flooded because of water issues, until you have your basements flooded, I don't know if you guys have ever had your basements flooded or flooded multiple times, it's not fun. I deal with that. This woman here deals with that. I love Goddard. I don't like Wichita. I moved out of Wichita. I moved out even further out of the big city to Wichita and then out to Goddard. I don't want Wichita to envelop where I am. I have just under 18 acres and I have farm animals at my place and water issues, waterway comes through and cattle has a hard time getting through the water. Try getting a 2,000-pound cow out of knee-deep, just not me, but the calf. Cap is over here and a mom is over here. Not fun. I want to stay Goddard. I hope you guys, commission can keep us in Goddard. We don't want to be part of Wichita. We've moved out of Wichita. Single-family, five acre, sounds good. High-density, no. And if you've ever seen teenagers crash at 167th and 23rd, have yourself blessed. Encount yourself blessed that you're not the family that had to see their child die at Kellogg and 167th. We want to be in Goddard, but we don't want all the added problems. We don't, I understand people want to increase our taxes.
Sorry to cut you off. Thank you for answering that. Thank you. This point will close the public hearing on F2.
Now, would be the recommendation to have a motion in a second to consider the rezoning request for zoning case 22-6. Are there any questions for the applicant or staff?
Anyone?
Yes, sir.
Park?
No questions. No problem.
Any questions?
There's no preliminary platting or preliminary.
Not at this time because it's land use and then that would be the next aspect. Because essentially what we're doing is changing from the industrial on the north side and the C2 on the south side, bearing in mind that the county side is zoning C22. I'm sorry, multifamily 22.
Simply talking about the zoning in that opinion.
And that's why the process is laid out the way that it is. We have the public hearing. We received the comment. At this stage, it's zoning, splits the land to be used for. And then as we proceed with the plating and the development, we take the concerns as roadways are a concern across the board, not just at 167th. We've had the discussions on 23rd. We've had the discussions on 183rd. We've had the discussions on 215th. We go above and beyond when we plow the roads. We don't plow our side of the road. We plow both sides of the road. Sedgwick County, Wichita, they don't do that. We try and practice the golden rule to the best of our ability. The elected officials and city staff are here to serve. These planning commissioners serve by statute at no compensation. So, you know, we try and do what's right and the concerns that are expressed, staff, planning commissioners, the elected officials, and the developer try and work together through the plating process to then take concerns and create a harmonious development for not only the developer but the surrounding area.
Thank you, Brian. Okay. Do we have any discussion? If not, I need a motion.
If there's no motion, you can either vote to deny, you can vote to table, or it'll die for a lack of a second or a motion.
If it dies, then we move on to city council, either.
Because we gotta do the land use in order to do the plating. It's already in the city. And by use, it's still the zoning, the applicant's engineer said, we can put a hog plant in the industrial zone if we want to.
Indoor plant, concrete plant.
Without having a public hearing, without, you could put in a stillness. Well, that's a little over the top, but my point is, is you could have pretty heavily industrial use there by its current zone. And you could put up row upon row of high-density apartments for multifamily 22 on the county side.
For a down, for a down zone.
So, you're actually limiting what can go in there with this application.
I'd like a motion to approve the rezoning request for zone-22-6.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One may.
General Commissioner, this is to conduct a public hearing for consideration of rezoning from industrial one district to R4 high-density residential for zoning case 22-7. And this is showing this triangular level of ground from 167th and the trail just to the south. And you can see the, essentially, think of it as row homes if you were in a larger community. These are the kind of things, by the way, that are going in in Andover, are going in in Derby and Wichita. And it's quite common and has been for some time on the coast, going back. And in fact, our initial, early on in settlement of the state, had contemporary structures at that time, similar to. Baughman submitted an application on behalf of developer Paul Kelsey for the rezoning for this one tract of land from C2 general business district to R4 high-density residential. The land's generally located on the west side of 167th, north of the Prairie Sunset Trail, south of US 54. The land's approximately 11.3 acres. The development's scheduled to be all owner-occupied dwellings introducing different housing types for ownership while working around the odd shape of the parcels. And final consideration for the rezoning request would go before the city council. And we have the same articles that you've seen before from section 100, point H, point 1 through 17. We have the existing uses and the condition of the subject property and the surrounding neighborhoods being that of farming ranch land, land used to the east, the single-family residents detached, to the south's farming and ranch ground, to the west is farming and ranch ground, and a section dedicated to future US 54, K42 bypass, as well as the Prairie Sunset Trail to the north is more ag ground. What's the current zoning of the subject property? What's the current zoning of the subject property and that of the surrounding neighborhoods in relation to the request? The land's zoned I one industrial. To the east, zoning is rural residential. To the south, zoning is rural residential. And to the west, zoning is I one industrial and rural residential. The length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped as a zoned factor for consideration. The land's zoned I one industrial. This type of zoning typically needs large amounts of transportation infrastructure to access it directly. It's setback from the highway and is also an awkward shaped lot. Would the request correct an error in the application of these regulations? That answer's no. Item five is, is the request caused by changed or changing conditions in the area of the subject property? And if so, what is the nature and the significance of such changed or changing conditions? That's yes, Goddard's experiencing a growth and we have the demand for additional housing in the area. Do we have adequate sewage disposal, water supply and all necessary public utilities, including street access that can provide to serve the area that would be permitted on the subject property? And that's yes, through the special assessment process. And as we said, the abiding arterial road, one sixty-seventh's currently paved. Would the subject property need to be platted or replatted in lieu of dedications made for rights of way easements and access control or building setback lines? And that's yes, the land's unplatted and would go through the plating process for the necessary dedications. Would screening be necessary for the existing and/or potential uses of the properties? And that's no, screenings required for multifamily and commercial. And this would be a residential containing three or more dwelling units. Item nine is, is suitable land or buildings available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as is requested? And that's no, R four land is approximately four acres. If the request is for business or industrial uses, are such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities? And that doesn't apply as this is a residential request. Item eleven is, is the subject property suitable for the uses in the current zoning to which it has been restricted? And that's no, I one industrial does not allow residential uses of any sort. To what extent would the removal of restrictions, i.e. the approval of the zoning regulations, detrimentally affect other properties in the neighborhood? And that's the neighborhoods are defined by the county as individual developments and are classified with the neighbor, neighborhood number. The abutting neighborhoods would not be compared to the proposed development for appraisal purposes. That would increase the additional traffic along one sixty-seven. Item thirteen is, would the request be consistent with the proposed zoning district classifications and intents and purposes of these regulations? Staff believes that this development is in conformance with the zoning district in accordance with article four, uh, section one oh three B. Article one, point oh one, the purpose of subdivision regulations. Staff believes that this development is in conformance with the intent and purpose of the sub development regulations per article one point one oh one. Is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan and does it further enhance the implementation of the plan? Yes, as previously stated on pages sixteen and eighteen of the comprehensive plan. And on page eighteen, to reiterate, that goal is to assure safe, decent and sanitary housing for all citizens in the community. And again, page sixty shows that the future land map of this is undeveloped. What's the nature of the support for the request? And that gets to increasing the tax base and diversifying your housing stock while opposition usually comes around the desire to, um, not change the land use composition and to keep it stagnant in its current form. Uh, is there any information or are there recommendations on this request available from professional persons or, or person or persons with related expertise, which would be helpful in its evaluation? Uh, it's often the case the city would introduce smaller lots to maximize the return on the city's infrastructure costs, meaning the more densely populated, the more cost effective the installation of the water and sewer lines are because you're able to have more users on that segment of line. And so as such, that cost is spread across more people. We have a breakdown, which is included in the staff report of the collective value and appraisals. Item seventeen is by comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety or general welfare outweigh the loss in property value or the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request and developments for residential use and does not pose a serious threat to the health, safety or welfare? Which gets into that, that down zoning that we discussed previously with what's allowed in industrial versus residential. And this shows the property in question, that, that white triangle there. And we have it highlighted with the purple dot dash and the star. And this is found in our comprehensive plan. And again, uh, concepts of what, what would go in this location? Uh, there was a financial cost for the, um, notice of public hearing. The documents have been reviewed by city attorney who approves this form, staff's recommendations to approve the rezoning request, case zone twenty-two dash seven, with the vote occurring after the public hearing. At this time, I'll turn it over to the applicant representative, Phil Meyer of Baughman, to answer any questions.
Phil Meyer Baughman, company agent for the applicant. What we're requesting, what we're doing here tonight, we're bringing you all the markets all at one time. And these are markets that we're building all over, um, Sedgwick County. Nope, the wrong one. That's our next opportunity. These are markets that we're doing all over Sedgwick County and every city. So the two-family, two, um, owner occupied is up north, the single family. This pie-shaped piece is just a challenge to develop. You can't get a street in it. You can hardly get housing in there. Doing these smaller, we're asking for the R four so we can do fifty-foot wide lots and do the townhomes that we presented to you. Um, you're gonna hear a case in a minute, but on the next one on your F four, this for DuBleusis. All four of those markets are happening in every city that we work in, in Sedgwick County. And you can start with Park City, you can go to Valley Center, you can go to Goddard, you can go to Hayesville, you can go to Derby, you can go to Andover. And we're building all of these markets in all of those communities along with. So earlier, I thought it was a very good conversation, but earlier, look at what you're building and look at these other towns. These other towns are doing this exact same development. I can say that because I'm, I'm representing them and working on many of them, not all of them. But what we're here tonight is to, to look at the R four so that we can do a new, unique development for this area. I don't think you've had these in Goddard yet. They are in Wichita now, being built, they are being built in Andover. That, and they're being built in Derby also. That little pie-shaped piece is the right location to try. With that, I'll answer any questions here in a minute.
The reason he's asking for the R four is strictly for the smaller.
Fifty-foot lot, yeah. That's the only way we can get the smaller lot width is to go to that zone.
By Goddard, yes, sure. Yeah.
How close are these concepts? I know they're not. I'm just curious.
How close are the?
The, the concept designs, are those pretty close? What do you?
Yeah, conceptually, they're close. So I can't tell you that's the exact one that's gonna be built, but conceptually, the intent of them and the, yeah.
I was just curious, yeah.
It's a good concept of what we're proposing to build, what use we're proposing to build.
How many homes would you expect to get on a, a plot that size?
I need to go back and look at the acreage again to answer that. I'll be third, twenty-five to thirty. It'd be a cul-de-sac down the middle and there's gonna come a point where there's only houses on the south side and not on the north because you can't, as it triangles down, there'll be a cul-de-sac behind it. Uh, one single cul-de-sac.
Access point of one sixty-seventh or, uh,
It's gonna be right here. Come in here, do this. Houses, houses. Third thing I'll go ahead and throw out, just 'cause I know the audience is getting tired, and Mike and I had a conversation and we thought it was best just to bring all these in once. We could've done Ben Healy, then the next month brought in two, and then the next month bring in the third one and bring them, we didn't wanna do that. So I know it's a long, hard meeting for all of us, but our intentions were good in that, here's everything we're trying to do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the, uh, public hearing for item F three.
Dawn Heck, um, I'm retarded, maybe.
Yep.
Um, okay.
I think he's keeping track on each one.
I have lived half my life, more than half my life, in Kansas. I came from Boston. I came from a big city. I know what row housing is like. I know the crime. I know there's no grass. I didn't want to raise a family in a big town. I wanted to raise a family in a place like Kansas. And we moved out to Goddard and I love it out here. Um, I keep hearing ag is no improvement. I thank you guys for, for being here and what you're doing. Agriculture is improvement. It improves our lives every day because it provides food for us. Without agriculture, nobody would eat. COVID showed us supply chain issues and, um, we still have supply chain issues. If we lose all our farmland, and I mean, we wanna grow in Goddard, I understand that. But where are we gonna grow our food? Where are we gonna get our food? We can't get it across the ocean. Row houses, no, I'm not for row houses. I don't wanna raise my family, my grandchildren. I'm out where I am because we want to retire there. I love it there. Um, twenty-five row houses, no grass, uh, no water drainage, drainage without another thing. But, um, let's find a way to improve Goddard without destroying it and making it become a huge place like Boston where there's crime. Red light district, you guys might not know what the red light district is, but let's not become like that. And I think the gentleman over here was referring to about businesses. You don't want businesses like we're in Boston. Crime will go up, um, anyway. I hope the gentleman will say no to this. That is a very, eleven acres is small and to put twenty-five multifamily in there, it's just, it, it's overwhelming. It's very overwhelming. I don't know what to say. Let's try to find a way. I don't know how, uh, as a, a community in Goddard that we can all come together to find a way to grow Goddard without having, um, these problems that I see that are gonna be coming down the road. Yeah. Especially these eleven acres or twenty-five row houses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Couple of questions for you, Wade Blanketip. So in the previous one, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of your arguments for voting for it was because the alternative was to leave it as commercial, right? So by moving it into residential, at least gets you away from it being a giant parking lot or, or something to that effect. So what's with this plot of land? Is it in the same boat? It's either multifamily or it stays, you know, commercial, industrial, something like that? Or is it residential or it just stays nothing? Would be, I guess, one question I would have.
Industrial uses include the construction of agricultural equipment repairs and storage, assembly to manufacture, repair electrical and mechanical appliances, instruments and the like, automotive trucks, recreational vehicles, sales, storage, repairs and washing facilities, building material productions, storage cells, including manufactured housing and lumberyards, clothing and textile manufacturers, construction equipment, distribution, repair, storage and sales, construction contractor office, including equipment storage area, food manufacturer, distribution, storage and frozen food lockers, furniture manufacturer repair, garages repair, including paint booths, garden stores, greenhouses, hydroponic farming.
So you got, you got half the dictionary, all right. So, so the next question, I guess, you guys have said replat often is like the next step. So right now, you're just doing the zoning, right? So the whole area, you're saying this is ruining houses here. When you say platt, right, it's not a word I'm familiar with. I'm more, like, when somebody parcels outland or something like that, what are you guys referring to when you say platt? What are they, what's happening in that?
F one, where they showed you the design with the streets, lots, that's a plan.
Okay. So, so.
Drainage. So we're all the, on the lot side.
So individually, like, you know, drainage, you know, what type of house and where and all that, that comes after? This is just the, we're doing this.
What's allowed and you put on the line.
Okay. And so the risk of this not being a residential multifamily would be that you leave it commercial and then nothing happens? And then ten years down the road, somebody slaps in a lumberyard or industrial hall and farm, you know, you're referencing.
There have been, we have been contacted for industrial uses there before.
Okay.
It's just in the preliminary discussion of such, there, it wasn't deemed to be all that friendly and it was getting into food manufacturing and strain on infrastructure and how much would be used and so we opted not to.
All right, thank you. That's all I had.
It is on the radar.
Thank you.
Jacqueline Cook, I just want you guys to do a self-evaluation. And if you were put in the same predicament that everybody else in this area has put in, would you want this in your backyard? I would imagine the answer's gonna be no. We've been in our area since nineteen ninety-one. My father-in-law ended up owning that property first and then we took it over from him in two thousand. And it's, I mean, we were there with the dirt road. We've been in the country. We didn't move out there to have all of this spittle bud that's happening now and today to, to come to our back door. And we're just asking that you reevaluate it. Doug, I really appreciate your nay on that. I think you were pretty stand-up on that and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything for item F three?
Just for my clarification, um, when we say industrial, does that assume that a person can cook whatever they like without permission from?
He just went through a huge list.
Yeah, wait, I know it's possible.
That won't come in front of us for anything. They just go pull a permit.
But it goes some, it goes somewhere, right? I mean, somebody in the city council would have to do something like that.
They pull the permit, it's already designed for that.
It's, that's the thing and it's the same way with staff recommendation. There are litmus items that are met. And those litmus items are defined not only by best practices, but by case law. And planning commission is a quasi-judicial body. And planning commission is a quasi-judicial body by nature, meaning they get to adjudicate land disputes essentially on what's to be used there. And their job, that they so graciously give their time away from their families and free time, is to try and oftentimes play Solomon and split the baby. And, you know, we have a framework that we use, and for an industrial use, if it goes in, it's platted, it's there, there's nothing to stop it. Now, we have a list of things that are specifically prohibited, like, you know, cement, or creosol, you know, a crematorium, distillation of bones, acid manufacturing, things like that. But there's a whole long list of things, which are pretty standard throughout Sedgwick County. So, in many cases, it doesn't matter whether you're in Wichita, or you're in Goddard, or you're in Derby, the uses for these classifications are pretty standard.
The reason why I ask is 'cause I think you've overwhelmingly been demonstrated by people here that they are against the multifamily, the high-density stuff. And y'all got pretty quiet when it came time to, you know, voice spitting on that one way or another, you know, I noticed that you was hard to get a second on that, and then he mentioned the industrial thing, and I think that kind of changed people's tone a little bit, but I think that there's an argument to be made here of what do people want versus, you know, what the concerns are with doing nothing, and then maybe having it turn into an industrial thing at some point. So, you know, I do think that everybody's made it pretty clear that they're mostly against a lot of the high-density stuff. Foot's not that enough, and I haven't seen any of that translate to any of the votes that appear to be in accordance with that, or, you know, I'm over here, yours is the exception.
Thank you.
Ken, I know my time's probably up. Is there a way to take that eleven acres and not make it a multifamily? I mean, eleven acres, you could split it in half into families, could build houses and that. I know it's a root shape. That's better than having currisel, whatever's so close by, and two.
At this point, the owner's brought this to us, and that's what we're ruling on. Well, we'll close the public hearing.
Just wondering why are we seeing single-family detached two stories? I mean, I understand it's R4, for the size of the lots we have that they're wanting to build, but are they building single-family?
Yes. At least that's what it shows, all the concepts are single-family, they're not multifamily.
In that triangle, it's...
We're looking at R4 simply for the, at the flat times.
And the statutory provision that this is, this public hearing's being conducted under was for the consideration of a rezoning application to rezone a tract of land from Iowa 1 Industrial District to R4 High Density Residential for allowing the development of single-family detached housing. So, that's what it's used with me. It would, so in other words, it wouldn't be multifamily two. It's because of the lot, the lot constraints is why that's considered high-density.
When did it become industrial?
It's been industrial, I think, I arrived in 2008 as the first administrator here, and I believe it was industrial when I got here.
Yeah, they make yours, and all of the highway industrial.
So, they consider agricultural farmland industrial?
No.
No.
At some point, the landowner had to make that request from ag to, if it was unincorporated, it would've been ag, and then it would've gone industrial, or, and there would've been a thousand-foot radius notice and all of that that occurred at the time. But, yeah, they, it's been that way forever. And like I said, I know that it is on the radar because we have had inquiries on that parcel and the other parcel before. And I don't mean like, years ago, it's, we get inquiries fairly regularly. And this is what the owner wants to do, and I think that this not only helps downzone that for the surrounding area, it helps us start to get a build-out and quite honestly build a wall with Wichita. Because it's coming. So, we need to start thinking...
Do we know how far Wichita is coming out?
At some...
As far as I can.
At some point, there probably won't be any county land left in between.
That's exactly right.
Why doesn't Goddard, why can't Goddard stop Wichita from coming out so far? Wichita has lots of land, and they envelop other towns.
In order to do that, we'd have to, we'd have to take ownership of the county, county land that you live on and don't want taken.
Annexed. I'd have to annex it.
We'd have to annex it. Ask you to inside the city limits to stop Wichita.
But when Wichita comes in, do they then make it city, so we're losing our property anyway as far as agricultural land, farming land?
Like, we have, we specifically, because, again, we practice the golden rule, and everyone on your planning commission and on your city council have roots in the community. Some of them have families going back to Blended that relocated from 167th and Maple to where we're at today, back when the railroad came through. So, you know, what they try and do is practice the golden rule. And if I were in the county, how would I want to receive that? So, we've even gone so far as to create a rural residential classification for zoning so that your land use, when you come into the city, can remain the same as what's there today. Now, if you go to sell it, plat it, change its use, then that changes the condition of that land, but at that point in time, it would be rural residential, and, but again, that's, it's not gonna happen next week, so don't worry about that, but it's coming. And we thought it would be several years, and the next thing we know, developments jumped out a mile and a half, and it's now at 167th and Maple, and now they're across 167th and Maple. So, you know, things, and with Wichita, you won't know you're being annexed until you get your, your notice, your hearing notice.
Is it better than to be annexed by Goddard?
You know, that's, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole, but yeah, I mean, well, you would be, like I said, you would be going to this discussion at two in the afternoon at 4:55 after having stood through line, gone through metal detectors, entry machines, paid your parking garage fee, and...
With no validation.
With no validation.
Yeah. They're not getting paid.
We did that classification next year. So, when you, when or if you do come into the city of Goddard, you can still have your livestock. We did that to try and overlay and protect you with your current land use.
So, are you going to eventually this overlay, if I'm getting the definition right, overlay us to prevent Wichita from coming, because that's another concern, right?
That's all for, actually, another meeting.
And it's complicated because it costs money. We gotta run water, we gotta run sewer, we've got roads, we've got, I mean, that's...
Well, I know parts of Wichita still didn't have, I mean, Wichita water.
Sorry, I didn't mean to...
Actually, I hate to catch you off, but we've already closed the public part of it. I'm sure you and everybody here would like to go home somewhere. Back to the discussion on R4 for this parcel.
That answered my question, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, I'll know. I'd ask. Or, do you have any question?
No question.
Any discussions? I'm looking for a motion of some sort.
I'll make a motion to recommend reapproving the rezoning request of zone, case number zone 227.
I'll say it.
Single-family detached, two-story, owner occupied. Set it on that.
Did you know that?
And I will say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is item F4, which will be the conduct of a public hearing for rezoning from R1 single-family to R2 two-family residential for case number zone 22-5. And this is the parcel in question, which is right off of 23rd and 167th with Marie Meadows to the north and south, abutting the property in question. This was the parcel that was just discussed. Baughman has submitted an application on behalf of developer Paul Kelsey for the rezoning of this tract of land from R1 to R2. It's generally located at the northwest corner of 167th and Pawnee, 23rd Street. It's not abutting the incorporated city limits, and it has been island annexed per KSA 12-520C. The city council reviewed the request on October 3rd, and the board of county commissioners approved it at their November 2nd meeting. The city council approved the annexation on November 7th. Once annexed, the land defaults to R1 single-family, at which point the developer can ask for a rezoning hearing to change the classification. The final consideration for the rezoning request will go before the city council. Again, you've seen this previously, it's the beginning of the 17 items that are required for consideration, and this is out of section 100, H.1, 1 through 17. Talks about the character and condition of the subject property, which is essentially surrounded by farm ground to the east, south, west, and north, with the single-family detached to the west as well. Current zoning of the subject matter properties, R1 to the east is rural residential, to the south's rural residential, to the west is rural residential, and to the north is rural residential. The length of time that the property has remained undeveloped and vacant, is that a factor in the consideration? No, the land was, until recently, a tract of land in the county and the city, we didn't have regulatory control over it. Would the request correct an error in the application? No. Is the request caused by change or conditions? The subject property, yes, in that the city's growing, and it's now in the city where it previously wasn't, and it helps us meet those growth demands. We have adequate sewer and water and public facilities adjacent to the property to serve that area, and that will be financed through special assessments. Subject property, would it need to be platted or replatted? Yes, it's unplatted, and we go through that plating process for the necessary dedications, reserves, easements, and engineering review, which is essentially your stormwater and roads. Would a screening plan be necessary for existing and/or potential uses of the subject matter property? No, because it is a residential land use. Is it suitable, is, I'm sorry, is suitable or land or buildings available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as requested? Zoning R2 accounts for 293 acres, including the proposed development, which is 15% of the residential land, and all R2 land is in the process of being developed or currently developed. Number 10 is if the request is for business or industrial uses, are these uses needed to provide more services? And this doesn't apply. Number 11, is the subject matter property suitable for uses in the current zoning to which it has been restricted? And if yes, R1 allows for duplexes as a conditional use. Conditional uses are treated to a similar fashion as a rezoning. To what extent would the removal of the restrictions or the approval of the zoning request detrimentally impact the surrounding properties? And then, as the county defines neighborhoods as individual developments, and they're classified with a neighborhood number, and the abutting neighborhoods would not be compared to the proposed development for appraisal purposes, there would be increased traffic on 167th, and it does not appear that it would affect the neighboring homes in terms of value. It's less certain if it would impact the marketability of the homes. Number 13, again, goes through the, the subject matter property being consistent with the proposed zoning district classification and intent, and is R2, yes, staff believes this is in conformance with the zoning district purpose. With respect to conformance with the intent for the subdivision regulations, yes, staff believes that this is in conformance with Article 1.101 with respect to purpose. Item 14 is, is the request in conformance with the comp plan, and does it further enhance the implementation? Yes, as you've seen previously with pages 16 and 17 and 60 of the comp plan. Item 15 is what's the nature of the support and opposition? It's, as you've seen before, general support comes from increased tax-based diversifying housing stock, providing additional rental properties for those who are either unable or unwilling to purchase at the moment. Opposition includes the city staying unchanged in its land use composition of single-family detached housing in larger lots. Number 16, is there any information, or are there recommendations on the requests available from professional persons? And again, providing rental properties in the traditional form avoids the need for renters to rent single-family detached homes, which are typically considered owner-occupied. Prohibiting renter-occupied dwelling units causes renters to look at renting single-family detached homes as the only rental option available. This causes people to actively look for homeownership to compete with speculators of single-family detached homes. This drives up the demand for single-family detached home values, which in turn makes single-family homes more desirable for real estate speculators as an investment opportunity. This causes bidding wars with the potential homeowners and speculators, further driving up the value of homes, and this continued real estate pushes, speculation pushes homes out of the market for many folks, and also provides for increased inflated volumes and a housing bubble. Item 17 is by comparison, does the relative gain to the health, safety, general welfare outweigh the loss in property values or the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request, and the development is for residential use and does not pose a serious threat to the health, safety of welfare by its land use? And this is just showing a chart that Mike had put together regarding the percentage of single-family dwelling units in Goddard, with, you know, over 90% being owned. And I'm sure he had more eloquent and more expanded information on that chart, but since I didn't put it together and I got this at noon today, this is what you get. This is our comp plan with the highlighted parcel with the dot, dash, and the star, with 23rd being down here and 167th to the east. Again, the property in question. Costs for the notes to public hearing. City attorney approves this deform. Staff's recommendation that it meets these conditions is to approve the rezoning request, case number zoning 22-5, with a vote to occur after the public hearing. At this time, we'll turn it over to Phil Meyer of Baughman.
Thank you. Phil Meyer, Baughman Company Agent for the applicant. Last time you got to hear me say that tonight, that's the good news for everybody in the room. Our request is for R2 to do duplex development at this location. We're doing, as I have said, all over Sedgwick County. I would tell you from coast to coast, it's duplexes and multifamily. You go to a larger city like Denver or Dallas, or apartment complex is going out like duplex is going out here. This is the new starter home for individuals, because you can't buy a starter home unless you have a down payment. So, first-time homebuyers are looking for a place to rent so they can save up the money to do the, to be able to buy their personal needs. But you're seeing this coast to coast. I'm being told, I'm no financial expert, I'm being told this interest... I am being told, I'm no financial expert, I'm being told as interest rates go up and single-family housing goes down, you're not going to see a change in multifamily development like this and apartments. It's the only thing that's going to keep going until interest rates come back down. I don't, no, that's a necessary condition for you guys to hear, but you're like, why do people keep doing these? Because they're going to keep going, and they're going to be built in Sedgwick County. It's just what the market is now. There's a stilly demand for that. So, with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have with me.
Is his intent to do the whole thing in duplexes?
That's what I was going to ask.
Or kind of like two-fifteen, you know, partial duplex, partial single-family?
I'm going to tell you the intent is for all of it to happen in duplex, but I'm going to tell you if that market slows down, you can do single-family and duplex, and there is a chance that that could change. We've done the opposite in a lot of developments, where we platted eighty to one-hundred-and-twenty acres and went back in and started rezoning, replating for duplexes and midstream, but it will be driven by market. And if the duplex market goes down, then yes, they would finish it out with single-family. That's the market. But my answer for you tonight is, our intent is to do it all in duplex. We can talk about, more than willing, and having other projects to do a buffer along the west property line where we have the existing suburban housing. I think that's a pretty good hedgerow that's in place today. It looks pretty solid, but we have in other situations offered a buffer along there to do some additional landscaping. When I say a buffer, we just agree to do, still going to be on a lot or part of the lot, but we do additional landscaping in there to help buffer. So if there's breaks or holes in that hedgerow, or you just think it's appropriate to add more landscaping in there, I'm more than willing to come back and discuss that.
City council, they had the one in Maple, that they forced them to do part of it, single-family, to put the housing to the north?
If I can?
Go ahead.
And then you correct me?
No, no.
My client volunteered, single-family, against the residences on the case you're talking about.
Yes.
I mean, I thought he volunteered to city hall.
He wasn't voluntold, he was volunteered.
Okay. I couldn't remember how that went.
How many units are you talking about? It doesn't say in the seventy, thirty-one.
We have not done a layout on that yet, so seventy acres, you're going to have one-hundred-and-sixty to one-hundred-and-eighty units.
You're talking three-hundred-and-sixty?
Two-and-a-half units.
Two-and-a-half. You're talking about three-hundred-and-sixty families being in there?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If there are no additional questions for staff or the applicant, we can turn it over to the chairman for the public hearing.
Welcome to the public hearing for item F four.
Can you bring that map back up?
Yes.
My name is Brian Edwards. I live at one-seven-five-three-zero west twenty-third, and that's the bottom property in the lower-left-hand corner. So I'm probably affected the most by pretty much everybody here. I've lived in Goddard all my life. Very proud of you, Goddardite. And I understand development, and I understand growth. What I am concerned about, you know, and I'm even mind that these were slated to be single-family units. Two-family residences, it'll be my backyard. I have a pool in the backyard. I will be uninsurable with my pool. I do not have a fence around my property, just because of that. I can tell you on the other side of the hedgerow, there are multifamily properties that also have open pools, because we have a five-acre lot. I'm concerned, like everybody else, about the traffic. In the mornings, I cannot get out of my driveway, there's about a twenty-minute window. You add two, three hundred more people along that road, the traffic's, there's a thirty-minute window I can't get out of my driveway, literally. So I either have to go to work late, or go to work super early to get out there on time. Everyone knows, I mean, I have nothing against renting, but everyone knows that people who rent don't really keep up their yards, they don't keep up, there's trash, there's noise, there's more, there's higher crime. I'm going to echo the same thing everyone else does, but this is going to be in my backyard, and it's going to be very close. And I'm really concerned about my insurability, the marketability of my house, like he mentioned up there in the previous one. You know, the value of my home hopefully wouldn't drop, but I'm afraid that if I was to ever sell, no one's going to buy that property with duplexes all over there. That's my two cents. And I would hope that if they do choose even to make single-family units there, that the developer would consider installing buffers around my property as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Simons, seventeen thousand nine hundred west Hyde, so I'm just to the west of that and a little bit north. I have eighty rental properties in Wichita. I've been talking to some builders, also a lot with the banking industry, and looking to do some two-family residential myself in town. The biggest reason the developers want to do two-family residential is money. The more they can pack into one acre, the more money they can resell it for, and that's exactly what they're doing. A lot of out-of-state buyers are buying these developments. These builders are building them, and the number is right from the one lady. Three-sixty, they're selling, they're building two-fifty, two-seventy-five, and they're selling for three-sixty, three-eighty. It's about how much they can cram in there and how much they can get for it when they sell it to, not in all cases, but in a lot of cases right now, out-of-state buyers. It's a lot of California money. They're doing like exchanges, they're buying these up because the cap rate works, they can make money on them. So that's the biggest reason they want to do this. And being in the rental world, brand-new duplexes, sure, they're going to look nice for a while, but it is true, it's a battle with eight of them. It's a battle to keep tenants under control. No matter who manages this or deals with it, you're going to have some slip through. It's just part of the world, in the rental world. It just is. There's always going to be some problems. Majority of them know, but there's going to be some problems. So that would be my biggest reason for not that, especially where we're at. Another question, are you guys, you would annex that, I'm assuming?
It's already annexed.
It's already annexed? So you would annex around us from where we're at, then? Is that, we wouldn't be in the city? I mean, you can annex, and I think you can do this, you can annex around?
Yeah, because you're unilateral, I mean, you can unilateral with platted properties and, like, you could have been unilateral back in two thousand and eight when I arrived after having asked to be in the city in two thousand and six.
Right.
And the city council at that time did not want to grow.
Right. They didn't want to spend the money, I guess, is that what I'm hearing?
They didn't want to grow.
They didn't want to grow. Okay. So then you would annex around us, or that's a different meeting?
Like I said, the plan would be to, given the history there, would not be to bring you in unilateral.
Would not be to?
As it has currently been, yeah, we would not unilaterally annex you, given the history.
Okay.
So it'll be an island for now.
Yeah, so just take that into consideration. I mean, that's why they're after the two-family, that's why that development's after that. It's about money. You know, we need housing, yes, but do we need to pack as many as we can pack in a one acre? I don't believe so, not there. You know, I don't, it's one thing to develop, I get it, single-family, it is what it is. If we got to do it, we got to do it, but, and he's after that primarily on this. We're not even talking about single-family. Up above, single-family, and you know, you've got multiple spots, so he's trying to drop multifamily or high density. I heard Brian say something about they push this high density because then you get more bang for your buck on your water and your sewer and all that stuff. That sounds good to you guys, but the high density, the more you, smaller the lots you make, the more development makes. That's the whole reason for it. That's the purpose of packing, is so that who's ever developing this can make the money, more money. That's what it is. That's all I got.
Thanks.
I'm Sam Hack. I live at one-six-five-oh-one west twenty-third Street South. And I understand this is going to be developed regardless, because it's already zoned for that, it's been annexed, and that's going to happen. I'm very, I'm very concerned about the packing concept that has been discussed. That area is surrounded by five-acre areas, homes that are platted for five-acre flats, and it just, it will decrease the value of those, it's inevitable because of the change. We have Bluegrass Estates has five acres, we have Leo, Murray Meadows. The neighborhood has a lot of places where it's restricted to five acres, and new developments nearby here are the same thing. So to pack so many, I know it's closer to town, it's in the town now, but I would urge you to consider retaining the single-family dwelling instead of multi.
I'm Denise Hike. My address is twenty-three-hundred South Wheel Street. And I would like to see the land behind me stay R one. What made me and some of my friends move to Goddard is the small-town feel you get here. If you put duplexes at that area, the first five years will be fine, but when the rental properties need to be updated, the landlord might not want to update like they should be. Goddard will be, will end up feeling like a big city and lose that small-town appeal that so many people move here for. Please imagine what ten to fifteen years is going to look like if we build this many duplexes. Your small-town attraction is gone, and you have that big-city feel with possibly not kept up rental property. Please consider keeping it single-residential. There are so many people that dream of owning their own home. You do not see my husband here tonight, because he says we will not change your mind. And this is just a formality that you have to go through. He is probably right, but I finally realized what strength I have. My strength is faith. I have strong faith in God and also faith in people. I have faith he will not only look at today, but also the future of Goddard. Goddard can grow and still have the small-town feel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Pankra, it's twenty-five-fifty South Wheel Circle, and then Southern Marie Meadows Edition. And my primary concerns with the rezoning of this are twofold. One, traffic, as many people have stated, on Pawnee, there's an awful lot of traffic, and it's sometimes a little difficult to get out of that cul-de-sac. And my second concern is packing in that many people as rental in the neighborhood and how that's going to affect us long-term. You know, initially, they'll look nice when they're new, but ten years down the road, what are they going to look like? What's the neighborhood going to look like? So I would encourage you to vote no on this and to retain this as single-family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leanne Barney. I see a great opportunity for a adult-living, no-step-entry affordability. Goddard is in desperate need of affordable housing. There are loans for zero down, real development, three-and-a-half percent interest rate on FHAs. But you take that, you're looking at taking a piece of ground and just ruining it. Goddard has not had affordable housing for quite a while, and Cloverleaf has come in, they've got the twin homes, they've got single-family. As agents, we don't even try to show Cloverleaf, because we have mixed use in there. So if you could consider a single-family use in what's in the best interest of the community is having the developer, is this Paul's? Consider a different dynamic of residence housing, other than, because you're going to have a whole row of multifamily in there. But it's a great opportunity. You're not going to delay progress, but if somebody can think outside the box, that would be useful for Goddard in what's needed here.
Thank you.
Bill Pock, I have an idea. So it appears that these properties have been set back to accommodate future widening of the road, is that correct?
I would assume that is correct.
Okay. It'd just be my opinion that as we develop these areas, which is going to happen, and it's going to be a good deal in many ways and a bad deal in many ways, I first of all vote to keep this single-residential, but I also would like the planning commission to consider setbacks on the roads to allow for the growth of the traffic in the future so that we could accommodate that.
We do do that now. In the past, it wasn't done, but we do do that now.
So there should be some, there will be some setbacks changed on that?
Yep. Whenever things done and they go to plot it, that's where we require setbacks or telling them what we want.
Okay. Well, if, you know, if we know that, it makes it a little easier for us to stomach. This poor lady here is going to lose part of her yard someday, probably.
I'm on his side.
Well, but if they take it down the center and expand it both ways.
I appreciate you bringing that back up.
But I vote single-residential.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Pat Brady. I live in Wichita. Four-twenty North Davis, so North Davis. But I have a family business, and we own a parcel of ground straight east of that. It's our tree farm for growing our trees. And it's kind of a unique place for us. We bought it thirty years ago, and it's an old eighteen-eighties farmstead with the old house that's fallen down now, and eighteen-eighties barn and just really nice property for growing trees, great soil. We also have weed on about eighty-eight acres of it. And my biggest concern is what all these fine folks of Goddard are saying is, development's fine, you know, you're increasing your tax base, but it's kind of a catch-22, because you're saying we've got to give him the zoning permit and then get your plating done and your engineering, and then figure out the problems with, you know, increased runoff. The more hard surface areas you have of roofs and driveway and paving, you're going to have a lot more runoff. And even if they design it with the retention ponds, eventually those ponds fill up. You get those big rays, the water's going to come out of there. What usually happens, all this water off of this property comes through, and it goes through the road. And there's a little low area, and we just call it like a dry creek. That's why you see all these trees. Moisture determines what's there. You're going to follow the trees, and that's where that water comes out, and it goes on through. So when you do that, you're going to have a lot more water and, you know, less area to soak it up, you're going to put a lot more water. And you've also got ditches, deep ditches on both sides of the road, because there's no turn lanes, there's no improvement on the roads at this point. So like I said, it's a catch-22. How do you guys, little city of Goddard versus the county, in their roads and their design, how do they do that? So I guess I've got more questions than comments. And if they do like, they said that they're going to, Bill over here said, you're going to have to really improve one-hundred-and-sixty-seventh, you're going to have to improve Pawnee, twenty-third Street. What I would hate to see is that they come in, and like they say, there's the center of one-hundred-and-sixty-seventh, we're going to take eighty feet to the east, eighty feet to the west. Mr. Kelsey's already... Mr. Kelsey's already either dedicated that in his plat that they'll do or they'll have to condemn his property to take that for turn lanes, improved roads, that type of thing. What I really would hate to see is when they do that, then they're going to want to take out our hedge road. Because we've got one of about the only hedge roads left on 167th that really protects our field, that protects our trees, the wind. You know, it's just good security as well. We have enough problem with people getting in there now vandalizing, breaking into our sheds, breaking into that house. They tore it all apart. So when you take away all that, then you have a new development and nice green lawns. You know, you're just ending up opening it up and you have a lot more problems that you're not foreseeing right now.
Thank you. I hate to catch up, but you're bringing it up. Sorry.
So if you widen it, widen it on his side of the road.
Absolutely. Otherwise, they take it down.
Yeah. I mean, he's got 70 acres, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sid Vogel. I live at 1112 West 23rd Street South. I'm a landlord too. I owed some duplexes, but not anywhere near where you got that many units in one place. I will tell you, duplexes are, people living are transitory. If you get somebody staying in one for two years, you're happy. So that'll be a continual turnover. Like I said, every time it turns over, you fight your renters. You lose faith in humanity if you own rental property. I'll tell you that right now.
It's true.
You just can't believe what people do. It's unimaginable, but it's allow 360 different families in there, 180 units. You know, that's a small town. I'm pretty sure you wouldn't want that many people coming and going, you know, if you were close to it. And that's why I say, you know, it's going to develop, but let's make it a single family. You know, the other ones, the 80 acres, we got like 20. I was part of the development of the other 80s on Murray Meadows. You know, we've got 20 houses out of it. So there's space there. That's what people wanted it. To pack in that many people next to them. You know, that's bad. I'm as far away as you can get in the section from them, but it would still affect us. I can't get out of my driveway because of the stop sign at 183rd and I'm a quarter mile away because the kids back up that far. If you add any more, that would be terrible. Just keep it the way it is.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry. I keep saying something. Dawn Hecking, this time I am a landlord. To own as many properties as you. I'm a good landlord. And I don't always have good tenants. They may appear good and then things go wrong. What happened to my rental property, I'm still reeling with. In the middle of COVID, I put in a brand-new AC unit. And my tenant left. And guess what? That brand-new AC unit vandalized, stolen, stripped, gone. Damage to the property, I get it all fixed up and boom, it is damaged again. I can't keep up with criminal activity. I put up cameras, but they're going to steal those too. I have a nice neighbor who points his cameras at the house. So I vote for single family. And as far as drainage, I know you guys don't do drainage. But drainage comes all the way from here and comes across here. Comes across, there's a waterway. This is where we live. Here, this is online. Comes across here. All the water comes from here and it comes way over here. So all the water from down here flows into my neighbor's pond. All this flows into my neighbor's pond. Has the county redesigned that years ago? Yes, before my current neighbor moved in there. But when we get heavy rain, it really floods. And yeah, it's bad. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mimi X, 17620 West Higbee Drive. Lots and lots of good points. And I just want to hit on some of them. I'm not going to say much different than what you've already heard. But Roots, my family moved out here in 1953. And aunts, uncles, my parents have all gone to Goddard. We have three kids that have graduated Goddard, have the Lions. And we have two in fifth and sixth grade coming up through the school system. So we're here to stay. Development, whether we like it or not, is inevitable. There are parts of the development that is very much needed for our community. But I think what we're opposed to is the duplexes and that we ask, we request that you keep it in R1. I think a lot of the developers look at these duplexes because that is the market right now. That's what's hot. And like somebody said, everywhere has them. They're right. Andover has them, Derby has them, everywhere has them. But it doesn't mean that we have to jump on that bandwagon and we have to jump on that train and go along with them. So in 10 years, when they're not kept up, our city, Goddard, looks trashy. And I hate to just put it out that way, but that's what will happen. A lot of people, they move into those because somebody said they can't afford to buy. But my question is, what is that next step? If we're building, all we're doing is building all these multifamily homes and all of these duplexes. These people are moving into rent to save up so they can have that down payment. And where do they go? They go to Andover and they go to Derby and they go to Maze. They don't stay in Goddard. There's not that next step. We don't have that to offer, especially on the south side. We go to the north side and they've got some of those developments to offer. So we ask that you look at that seriously and don't allow the duplexes.
Thank you.
Howdy. I'm Steven Brady, representing Brady Nursery. Our farm's at 2226 South 167. This whole meeting, I've been thinking of a country music song, but John Anderson. Progress came and took its toll. And this meeting, we're deciding on what that toll is going to be. I think that the two-family residential would be nothing but a bad impact for the surrounding sections of this land. For one, obviously, it's going to decrease property value on all the Leo Street, all the nice five-acre blocks. The biggest thing I'm seeing from a business standpoint is you're going to put 360 families in there. Let's say there's 500, 600 kids in there. We put our blood, sweat and tears into our tree production in there. And it takes us five, six, seven years to grow the beautiful specimen trees that we provide Wichita and Goddard and Maze and all the surrounding areas by. There could be a group of kids from that neighborhood. What do kids do, high schools do? They sneak out. Where are they going to grow? Into the tree field. They could cause $10,000, $20,000 of the damage on my new trees in a night. So that's going to force us to spend money we really don't need to be spending on putting massive fences in the front of our property. Who knows what's going to happen when they annex the road out, take out our wind row. If that shelter belt's gone, if our hedgerow is gone, we're going to lose a lot of nursery production potential from the increased wind and increased environmental stress. Obviously, it's sad. Anytime I see a good section of farm ground getting developed, just kind of kills my soul a little bit because it took eons for that to get to where it's at. But it's going to happen. So I think this whole meeting, people have been putting their hearts out to try to have you guys lessen the blow on the surrounding areas. And I hope it's going to your guys' hearts, that you guys have a decision where you could lessen the impact on these people's livelihoods around us. And I mean, I'm upset that a neighborhood's going in there in general. I'm going to be really upset if it's a two-family deal because obviously, I don't want that. I don't think anybody in this room wants that besides the developer. So just hope you guys hear what we're pleading at their hearts and that it's in your guys' decisions right now to influence that.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Justin Ming, 2250 Leo. Let's see. Got a lot going through my mind right here. My property is third up off of Leo Street, Murray Meadows North. I'd never in my life imagined it being in duplexes, ever. Housing? Yeah. I mean, absolutely. Somebody goes and builds a house, nice throw it, goes, grows a family. My fundamental problem with this R2 is it's corporate housing. And the wealth is going somewhere else. That's it. That's when you get right down to it. And it's spiraling the rest of this.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
That's a tough act to follow, but I follow it quite often. I'm Sarah Ming, 2250 Leo Street. I've already said this tonight, but the biggest difference I see with this piece of property versus all the other pieces of properties that we talked about tonight, gentlemen, is that there is no commercial situation, no threat of commercial going in here. So there is no reason, because we've already approved single, two-family residential, other areas or types of housing like that. On 215th, we already have duplexes going in. We have those opportunities already in our area. So there is no reason to ruin this piece of land for our community, to erode the fabric of Goddard or the developers to put in more density in this area. We don't have the threat of commercial going in. There's not going to be a hog farm. There's not going to be anything that's terrible that we're all supposed to be afraid of and avoid. So really, the only threat is high-density housing turning into low-rent housing that turns into the crime and vandalism that businesses that have supported our communities for decades and people who have lived, sweated and died, as George Bailey said to Mr. Potter for their community, why don't we build them some houses that are a decent set of rooms that they can live in and own and take ownership in our community and contribute long-term? So it's a wonderful life. Let's keep it that way.
Jerry Breckridge, 2341 South Leo, first house on the opposite, first house. So I just want to just say real quick, this is my property right here. So I live right here. I planted 90 trees here, 90 cedar trees along this head of road. For reasons for the dust, just so you know, because we get a lot of dust there from the other side of Leo. But mainly, all the high school traffic and the footbacks up from that stop sign. So it gets very noisy right here, just to tell you. So I wanted some privacy. The main thing I'm up here to tell you real quick is my daughter lived in those duplexes down towards Derby. And she saved up money so she could get a house. And it's very noisy. There were crime. People don't take care of stuff. We're going to have that there if we do two-family homes. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Jeremy Simmons, 2311 South Leo, on the west side of Leo Street, third property, excuse me, second property to the north of 23rd. Thanks for allowing me to voice my concern here tonight. I'm going to echo pretty much what all the rest of my fellow neighbors have said. We can't stop development and growth. We get that. But what we do ask is consider keeping it R1, single family. Like what you folks did with Arbor Creek. You know, we needed a nice housing division on the south side of the highway for those folks that can afford it and attend, you know, 265 schools. And I think that would be another prime piece of property with a very tasteful development like you guys did with Arbor Creek. So thank you.
Thank you.
Roger Ward, 2111 South Leo. Kind of going over what everybody else said. I think your biggest kickback on any of the properties that you've slated out is multifamily dwellings. People are fine. We know what Spanish is coming. Fine with one-family, single-family dwellings. It makes a huge difference. And also, I mean, if you look at all these people out here, it'd be like if we were sitting, if we were on that side of the table looking at you, telling you that we're rezoning the plot right next to your house is a quick trip. It's not a family dwelling, but it's that kind of traffic. You get that kind of roof wrap, that kind of stuff going on. Just the traffic in general is something that you wouldn't want. So yes, take that into consideration. And not all the plans that they're going to put forward count into, put everything into consideration. As you stated earlier to Chris, all the water north of the tracks goes north. All the water goes, south goes south. Well, if that's the case, why is there a culvert going into Chris's property from the north side of the tracks? That water comes south and unfortunately, the cooks, they deal with all of that water drainage to there. You put all that concrete and all those houses in that area, it's going to do nothing, cause trouble for everybody south of that. I guess, like everybody else, I know it's coming, the R1. I'd rather see that by far than two-family.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Chris Beeter, 230 Walnut. Again, I don't have anything new and exciting here to talk about other than I encourage you guys to keep this in R1 development and hold the developer accountable to bring growth for Goddard that's good for Goddard and it's going to be here long-term for Goddard.
Thank you. Thank you.
Close the pelvic area. Feel like we've had this meeting time and time again. When people come in, developers do come in and want to expand Goddard development to duplexes or multifamily dwelling or whatever. And there are times that we have agreed, you know, to allow that to happen. And you know, Goddard's only, the land area is only so big. So I feel like there is, you know, a time that there's a, you know, there's a limit of... We want to bring in opportunities for everybody to be able to be a part of this community and be able to live out here in this town that makes sense for the town. I mean, I do feel like Wichita is at our doorstep. And they are bringing in, you know, duplexes or bringing in everything that the county wants to bring in. You know, the city will bring it in up to us because it doesn't really affect them that much. I'm just curious, how many of you are going to Sedgwick County Commissioners and sitting in on those meetings? and sitting in on those meetings? When, about roads that you're concerned about as well that are not in Goddard City, but they are in Sedgwick County and their townships? I mean, this, I'm just, I'm just voicing my, my, you know, I feel like we are doing what we're supposed to be doing. But I do feel like there's a threshold to. So we have to be mindful of your guys' opinions, your guys' thoughts. And we're trying to do that too. So we're not, we're not just wanting every square acre of land in the Goddard area to be developed into duplexes. That's not what we're trying to do. But we just want to be, you know, mindful of what, what our purpose is to grow the community and smartly and rightly. And also hear what you guys have to say. You know, we want to be mindful of that too. I mean, I just want to let that opinion be known that, you know, there's a threshold somewhere.
Thank you. Here's a special. Time is, if I'm a patient.
I have a question for you, Brian. What are our motion options?
You can.
Sorry?
Essentially table it, which would require a motion and second. You can deny the request, or you can adopt the request. So a denial of a request would be to deny the rezoning request for the case number 225. An approval would be to approve.
If that was the motion, and then it would just be the opposite? I mean, we would vote yes to deny. If the, if the majority said no, we don't want to deny it, it would pass? Is that how that works?
A majority, simple majority.
For yes or no? But on a denial, instead of yeses, it would be the nos that would pass it? Is that correct? Just want to make sure I understand.
Does it go to city council at that point, anyway? You're awful quiet today.
Mm-hmm. There's no more discussion. Doug, I totally agree with what you're saying. In our threshold, we don't know what it is, but we currently have a significant unknown. So I think, I would make a, my motion would be to deny this request and leave it as R1.
All in favor?
Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, but if you're still good at the residential, you might talk about that wider road, Brian.
Let's just enjoy the moment.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys, for your patience. We appreciate it.
You seen those staff before?
I'm not a, I think in zoning, it's a, um, I'm a generalist, and it shows when.
It's a good thing Mike is not here.
Nobody had no comment.
He's got another half hour.
Nobody had, he said he wasn't.
It's like cream of mushroom cake.
Okay.